Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. As the mayor of the city of Kingston, I offer these words in the spirit of this gathering. Let us bring our good minds and hearts together as one to honor and celebrate these traditional lands as a gathering place of the original peoples and their ancestors who were entrusted to care for Mother Earth since time immemorial. It is with deep humility that we acknowledge and offer our gratitude for their contributions to this community, having respect for all as we share this space now and walk side by side into the future. So with that, Mr. Clerk, we will formally call to order, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor Patterson, we have quorum.
Okay, so we have nothing under committee, the whole closed meeting, so the first thing we will do is approve the addits. We have an additional clause under the consent report.
Point of order?
Counselor McLaren.
Sorry to disturb you, I have a conflict with the addits, so if I could replace the disclosure of pecuniary interest with the addits, that would be wonderful.
Just give me one second, I'll run through the summary and then I'll invite anybody that wants to step away and not vote on the addits, you can do that, and then we'll have the declarations of pecuniary interest after. Okay, thank you. So just a couple of miscellaneous business and a new motion, and then of course, a large number of communications. So if you have, if you're going to declare a conflict on the addits, I just recommend you can just step away now, so we'll take, carry the vote, take the vote on the addits. Can I have a mover and seconder, please? Moved by Counselor George. Counselor George, did you have something you wanted to, yes?
Your worship, I just wondered if this was an appropriate time to request that new motion number two under the addits be dealt with earlier on in our regular agenda. I was thinking possibly immediately following deferred motions, given that I think the bulk of the people in this room and possibly Memorial Hall are here for that particular item.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, can I see your vote? Okay, so what we're gonna do is, we need to do this in two stages, because the new motion is not on the agenda yet, so let's approve the addits, get it on the agenda, and then we can call for a separate motion that would then rearrange the order of the items, okay? So with that, can I have a mover and a seconder for the addits? So moved by Counselor George, seconded by Counselor Bohm. And that carries. Can I just get that on my screen, please? Oh, great, thank you. Okay, so now, we have a motion to amend the agenda to move new motion, declarations first, okay, hold off on that. Okay, next we will do declarations of potential pecuniary interest. Counselor George.
Thank you, your worship, I have one of those as well. Okay, I Kevin George of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of both clause two and four of report number 21 as my company has been retained by the applicants to provide survey services.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor Holland.
Thank you, your worship. I am Mary Rita Holland of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of clause two, report number 19, City of Kingston and Queens University Strategic Partnership, as my employer, Queens University, as I employed by Queens University. Thank you.
Counselor McLaren.
I Jeff McLaren of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of report, info report number three and new motion number two, in that my business will be directly affected by the interim control motion and bylaw. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Cannon.
Thank you, and through you. I Adam Cannon of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of motion number two, as I am a landlord within this area. I Adam Cannon of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of report number 21, as I am a licensed Realtor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, seeing no other declarations of potential pecuniary interest, now I'll entertain the motion to amend the agenda, so moved by Counselor George, seconded by Deputy Mayor Holland, that new motion number two be moved to just after the deferred motions. And that carries, thank you. Okay, so we have no presentations this evening, we do have some delegations. So our first delegation this evening is Meredith McDonald, who will appear before council to speak to information report number three with respect to consideration of an interim control bylaw near campus neighborhoods. And just a note to all of our delegations this evening that you have five minutes.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, councilors. This is Lauren Butler, who is a neighbor of mine, and we're up here to speak to why we're requesting city council and the mayor to pass the interim control bylaw. We really feel that, councilors, this could happen to you. You buy this beautiful home, you wake up one day, and your neighbors have turned a four-person house into a 12 to 16-person monster rental. This is the view from our neighbor, Bill Bosworth, bedroom window. The privacy of his backyard is completely shadowed now by this monster addition. There were no minor variances, there was no public consultation, there was no need to, as the current bylaws stand. So why is it that we need this interim control bylaw? The city is under enormous pressure to grow, and we need to grow in order to survive, but at what cost? The districts of Kingston are, especially Williamsville, Portsmouth, and Sidneyham, are at a critical tipping point. As you can see, small homes are being turned into monster rooming houses. This two-bedroom home was just, had an application put in for a month, becoming a multi-unit Neighborhoods in the central districts need protection, especially in order to keep cities' downtown core vibrant. The time to act is now, we need to ensure that these historic neighborhoods that we like to live in are saved from ruins. The official plan is directed, or the hopefully soon-to-be enacted official plan update, has provisions to direct growth and intensification along the corridors and city centers, example, Princess Street corridor. But the provision also has protection for stable areas from incompatible development or types of development and rates of change that may be destabilizing. This type of build will not help families want to move back in here again. Kingston's bylaws are outdated, and the city is working to update these bylaws, but construction of this type of addition to our family homes will continue if we don't have an interim bylaw. The interim control bylaw, in the case of stable areas, can be enacted, sorry, in the case of stable areas that are being threatened by destabilizing development. I don't know if you can see the addition on the White House and how far back they've taken the family home, to basically take up the whole entire lot. As I said before, and Neil Donnelly said at the last meeting, we are in a critical tipping point. Neighborhoods may be lost and forever swallowed up by some of these districts if we do not pass this interim bylaw. Districts that surround the city keep the city vibrant and alive, and if we allow it to crumble, not only will we lose tourists and business, but it will be harder to recruit and retain professionals, professors, and businesses alike. Do we want this city to turn into the next Windsor, the next Hamilton, or something like Detroit, where you have to spend billions to revitalize your downtown core? The city actually received reports from Utilities Kingston in 20, or sorry, 2002, that the infrastructure near the Queens districts was not able, or they had concerns for it being able to maintain continued growth. If you take a look at these homes in the university district area, just adjacent to our neighborhoods, you can see how large the additions have become. These are no longer three- and four-bedroom homes, these are monster developments, and if we don't keep up, the city is going to pay for it. So what's the purpose of the interim control bylaw? To give these neighborhoods a needed timeout phase, so that city can study how best to intensify it, ensuring that it is sustainable and continues to make Kingston a livable city. It is not to prevent all development or renovations. Homeowners will still be able to have renovations on the existing footprint of their house. If they want to do additions, they would simply, that extended the footprint of their house, they would simply have to put in for minor variance.
Thirty seconds.
Do we, thanks, do we not want a public consultation when we are doing these massive rentals? It's not to discriminate against students or renters. Homeowners can still rent their homes, developers can still build these purpose-filled developments that help alleviate the need on student homes. Let's try to ensure that Kingston remains beautiful and vibrant, and that this interim control bylaw can protect us, so that we can have a livable city for all of our residents, students, retirees, professionals, and families. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the delegation? Counselor Stroud?
Yes, thanks. Thanks, your worship, and thank you, Ms. McDonald, for that presentation, and thank you as well for coming. In your opinion, why is it that the timeout part of the interim control bylaw is needed, rather than just waiting for the bylaws to be updated?
As you can see from one of the pictures of the single-family homes that was just recently sold and is now applying to triple the size, developers, landlords, homeowners know that change is coming, and people looking to buy up residences and quickly turn them before the bylaws may be more restrictive are gonna do so, so I think most of the people in the areas that I live and the people that I've spoken with are concerned that we are at this tipping point. It is gonna change, and it's our feeling that opportunistic landowners that want to flip these houses and to decimate kind of the area to make an income are gonna do so much more in the next year while the bylaws are being rewritten. City staff worked really hard to come up with these new bylaws, or the interim bylaw, and they also want to come up with a thorough bylaw to meet the city's needs.
Thank you. Counselor Shell.
Thank you very much, thanks for your presentation. You mentioned the house that you showed, there were no minor variances needed, there was no public consultation needed, and I think what you were trying to emphasize is that anyone can do this. This is something that's by right. Anyone who owns a house and who wants to increase the number of bedrooms to rent can do it currently, no problem.
Right. Lauren can probably speak to this a little bit better, because I am a few houses down, Lauren is right next door, but there was no, they were simply able to duplex the house, increase the size to basically put on this additional home on the back with a hallway between, and there was no public notice, there was no consultation, none of the neighbors were notified, and they only knew that it was occurring when the backhoes literally tore down the fence and came in next door and started to level. So, and even then, they were told, oh, we're just gonna put on a small addition. This is not a small addition. This is not somewhere where they intended to live. This is truly just to take advantage of the current bylaws before they change.
Counselor George.
Thank you, your worship, and through you. I know you haven't been privy to a number of the emails and discussions we've had with a number of people who we, they feel would be terribly affected by this, and I'm talking because of the interim bylaw would cover off so much work that the local electricians, the plumbers, the small companies, the renovators that make their living in these areas, what do you say to them if that works shut down and their income is no longer?
I've actually spoken to a number of contractors, to the plumber that I know, the electrician, and said, do you guys, you know, have an issue with a timeout phase for these three districts? Do you have an issue with this being enacted? And one response said, no, and you know what? That thing that went up to your neighbors is disgusting, and there's so much illegal building that they're seeing and applications that are kind of being pushed through. He said, I have no problem if I need to put in a minor variance. I am booking, you know, eight months out, so if we enact this bylaw and it's for a year to give the city time to rewrite the official bylaws to match the city plan, I truly don't think that it will have as detrimental effect as I think some of the developers and the contractors were initially thinking. I think the paperwork that first went out on the interim bylaw, it was a very thorough report, but it was also very long, and so I think there was some miscommunication and some misinterpretation, and of course, the city will be able to answer those questions far better than me who read it a few times. But I think it's important that we prevent any further destruction, because there are a number of families that are literally just exiting and deciding, do I want to pick Kingston to move? Do I want to actually stay here, or do I want to relocate?
That's kind of spinning off the response I was looking for. I'm not sure, and I'd have to ask you, the clerk, or if the, all the comments that we've received from, from people in the industry, if they are made public, because I think you'd get a totally different outlook than from the one person you spoke to.
Question?
Are those, are the, are those documents available to members of the public?
No, 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 only questions to the delegation.
Oh, sorry.
No further questions?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, seeing no other questions, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, moving on to delegation number two, Sally Milne and Chris Mueller will appear before council and speak to information report number three with respect to consideration of interim control bylaw for the near campus neighborhoods.
I'm just trying to find my...Marcus is gonna come and help me. I'm pressing F5. Thank you, Mayor Patterson, and thank you, members of council, for allowing me this opportunity to speak. My husband, Chris, and I moved to Kingston 27 years ago, and we bought a house on Nelson Street. I think Marcus is gonna get my slide up. We bought a house on Nelson Street between Mac and Princess Streets, and when we moved to Nelson Street, it was a family neighborhood, there were other professors, there were people who worked at the hospital, there were teachers. And our house, our house is a two-story brick, it was built in 1910. It had lovely architectural features on the inside, large plaster crown moldings and decorative archway at the top of the stairs, and the previous owners had planted a beautiful garden in the front of the house. We moved in on a Friday. What we did not know was that just prior to us buying the house, the house next door had been sold, and what was a family home became, well, we found out this on the Monday, we moved in on Friday, on Monday backhoes arrived to dig a basement addition, for the addition that would allow the house to accommodate eight tenants. For the first few years, our relationship with the students who lived there was great. They, they would take care of our dogs for us when we go away on holiday, and we took their computers and bikes into our house over Christmas holidays when they were worried that there was a potential for break-ins at an empty student house. But sadly, as time went on, the street deteriorated. There were more cars parked on front lawns, sofas, broken beer bottles, and then gravel was brought in to cover the grass of the backyard next door to make it into a parking lot, and this became the view we had from our backyard. And families started to move away. Across the street, the former dean of arts and science moved to Elginburg. Next door to them, the administrator for the physics department moved to Berryfield, and both homes became rentals. A couple of places down the street were in such bad shape that they became rooming houses, and men with some pit bulls moved in. When one of those dogs attacked one of our dogs, leaving big puncture wounds in her cheek, and while the guy stood there swearing at me, we decided it was time to move. We loved our house, but our quality of life wasn't the same. The diverse community that we had with, where neighbors and students were our friends, and where there were nice gardens, and we felt safe, was no longer there. Ours wasn't the only street that reached a tipping point where the full-time residents were moving out. Residential neighborhoods, all residential neighborhoods in the downtown core and adjacent to Queens are at risk. We didn't want to move out to the suburbs and add to the number of commuters looking for parking. We liked being close to downtown and walking distance to the shops, restaurants, the market, so we took another chance, and we were fortunate enough to buy a house on Edgehill Street, between Center and Kensington, in one of the loveliest parts of Kingston. This was 11 years ago. The neighbors there welcomed us with open arms. There were neighborhood tea parties where people ranged in age from two to 94, and there were students that came to those parties as well, and... So, and this was a reflection of the vibrancy and the diversity of our neighborhood. Now, with recent developments, such as the duplexing of 76 Center Street to accommodate up to 12 or more tenants, we're not sure yet, and the family home directly across the street from us, which is just sold and is now being advertised as an eight-bedroom rental, it looks like we're heading towards another tipping point. We don't want to move again. What was already happening 27 years ago has yet to be dealt with. Nothing has changed in the areas around Queens and downtown, they're all going in only one direction. The development of properties such that they'll never be reconverted to family homes. We know enrollment at Queens is increasing. How many more students will need to find housing in the next coming years? Why are we cramming 10 to 12 students into a house, thank you, when we might need 2,000 more rooms? So how can, and how can safety and privacy standards be maintained in areas that are originally planned for single-family dwellings? We're not against students. Queens employs many of us. This is a question of balance and lifestyle for both students and full-time residents who want to live close to where they work. If we all move out, will downtown businesses survive?
Thank, thank you very much, thank you. Are there any questions for the delegation? Seeing none, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, our third delegation this evening is Harold Parsons, Executive Director for the Boys and Girls Club of Kingston and area, who will appear before council and speak to clause one of report number 19 received from the CEO with respect to the Boys and Girls Club purchase of services and community hub at West End facility.
Mayor Patterson, city councilors, my name is Harold Parsons, and I'm the Executive Director of the Boys and Girls Club. It's a privilege to present with Don Amos, the Executive Director of the Seniors Association, and to update you on our West End community hub. First, please accept regrets from Peter Kingston, our board president, who is currently head of town and unavailable to attend. The Boys and Girls Club have been delivering after-school, evening, and summer camps at the West End Hub since 2014, and have been seeing a tremendous amount of growth. In the past year, there have been over 48,000 visits during after-school by children and youth between four and 18 years of age. During the after-school program, they receive educational support, physical activity, health and wellness programming, and social and community engagement opportunities. The youth program has been a highlight with over 200 registered teenagers that have access to 22 hours a week of free programs where they receive soft skill and leadership development in a safe environment, that includes participation in the Police Athletic League, and this league attracts youth from across the city with a particular focus on making sure pathways to education and Boys and Girls Club youth residing in the North End are provided with transportation in order to eliminate barriers to participation. The West End goes beyond supporting just those that live in the West End. The Boys and Girls Club has five other full-program locations, and we provide transportation for our members at the Robert Meek Community Youth Center, Rito Heights Public School, J.G. Semeco Public School, Holy Family Catholic School, and the Joyceville Public School to participate weekly in the Junior Police Athletic League serving eight-to-12-year-olds, our swimming programs, and special events throughout our three hubs. We are now serving, on average, 700 children and youth per day. We have reached out to many groups and organizations over the past few years who have developed significant partnerships. One example is that we provide office space to the Kingston Military Family Resource Center, and in return, they provide one youth coordinator to work with our youth. They've recognized that 51% of the military members reside in the West End and are seeking proactive ways to serve military families in the community. Given that our children and youth are in school during the day, we've made a natural partnership with the Seniors Association, and now I'll turn it over to Don Amos, who will update you on their contributions to the West End Hub.
Thanks, Harold. I'm gonna give you some numbers to start off, and it'll give you a basis of why a need of a facility such as this one not only supports the Boys and Girls Club, but it supports the Seniors Association as well. Our current membership sits a little over 4,800 members. In 2016, we had 606 new members join the association. Expansion has been on the horizon for a few years for us, and in 2014, the association took the leap and decided to offer another hub of activities to its members. Senior Center West was stood up. This location was with the Boys and Girls Club, and it made sense. We utilize the building during the day when the bulk of our members are engaged in activities, and the Boys and Girls Club utilizes the facility after school. This gives the building, building optimum usage with very little downtime. Where have we been and where are we going? As you can see from the slide, the growth in activities and registration has snowballed. The first session in 2017 indicates we will surpass our 2016 numbers. This concept of a hub has taken off for the association, not just in activities, but also in volunteerism, with 24 individuals either instructing or supporting the activities, giving an average of a combined 125 hours per week of their time. This is full community engagement. Senior Center on 56 Francis Street is full, it is at capacity. Most of you have been to there, and over the last couple of years, you know that it's a hub of activity. Expansion, it basically is not an option, but a necessity, if the association is to meet the membership demand.
Thirty seconds.
Okay. This hub has been an excellent fit for our organization, we've been able to offer more activities that could not be done by our main location because of the size of the class or capacity issues in general. Some of these programs include Aquafit, pickleball, Drums Alive, chair yoga, Zumba Gold, and much, much more. It is anticipated, the association, that growth over the next three to five years will push our membership into the range of 7,500 members. We will need hubs such as this one and the North End and East End facilities to accommodate the operational requirements of this many members.
Thank, thank you very much. We're packing a lot into our agenda tonight. We're packing a lot into our agenda tonight, so unfortunately, I do need to enforce the five minutes. But are there any questions from council? Okay, seeing, councillor Turner.
Thank you. And through you, Mayor Patterson. Is there anything else you'd like to add to that really quickly?
Well played, councillor Turner.
Well, when you phrase it that way, basically, the collaboration that we've had with the Boys and Girls Club has been excellent. It's a, it's a natural fit. The hub that has happened in that facility has been amazing, and you can see by our numbers, let alone Harold's numbers, that it's, it's a thriving facility that is seen as a community hub. And it's a fantastic opportunity for the community in general.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so with that, we have, those are the three delegations that we have in the agenda. Are there any other delegations to be added? Councillor Stroud?
I've already given clerk the written version. I would like to add, waive the procedural bylaw to add Jason Truman to speak to new motion number two.
Okay, so that has been moved by councillor Stroud, seconded by councillor Hutchinson. Okay, please vote. We'll have to do these one at a time, so.
Okay, we're going to end this vote and restart it?
And that carries by a vote of 10 to 1? Okay, other delegations, councillor Bohm?
Thank you, your worship, and I'd like to ask that clause 11.4 and 11.5 of City of Kingston procedural bylaw 2010-1 as amended be waived in order to allow Frances Campbell, Commissioner of Municipal Affairs, Queens Alma Matters Society, to speak to information report number three with respect to consideration of interim bylaw control.
Okay, so a motion to add Frances Campbell, moved by councillor Bohm, seconded by councillor Sanik. And that carries. Councillor George?
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Bohm, that clauses 11.4 and 11.5 of City of Kingston procedural bylaw 2010-1 as amended be waived in order to allow Michael Keane, Manager Policy and Development, FOTEN, to speak to information report number three with respect to consideration of an interim control bylaw near campus neighborhoods.
Okay, moved by councillor George, seconded by, is there a seconder? Seconded by councillor Bohm, thank you. And that carries. Any other delegations to add? Councillor Neil?
Yes, I'm at a loss because I gave all of these to the clerk to, to fit into the template. And there's one I know that councillor McLaren will want to move later. Here we go. Thank you. It's good to have friendly neighbors. I would like to add two, two delegations.
So, one at a time, please.
Okay. John Granville and Christine Sipnovich for by-election. And I believe Peter Stroud will second that.
Okay, so John Granville and Christine Sipnovich to speak to report number 20, clause one. Moved by councillor Neil, seconded by councillor Stroud. That carries.
And lastly, for me, I'd like to add Patrick Powers, Mark Peabody, Matt Gervin, and Mike Preston to speak to the interim control bylaw. So I think that's a couple people's cue to leave.
So is that all, that's all one delegation?
All one delegation.
Can I have those names, please? I didn't catch all of them.
I believe the clerk has the motion.
Okay. And that's with respect to new motion number two?
Mayor Patterson, the names are Patrick Powers, Mark Peabody, Matt Gervin, and Mike Preston.
Okay, thank you. Okay, again, moved by councillor Neil, seconded by, is that seconded by councillor Stroud as well? Councillor Neil?
Sure.
And that carries. So that's an additional five delegations. Last call.
Yes, my other neighbor has one that I knew that he wanted to move. I can move it if somebody forgot. That Catherine St. George, Stacy Postle, speak to the motion regarding the Phoenix Pay Motion. That's motion number one. And I believe Mary Rita seconded that. I apologize. Councillor Holland.
Deputy Mayor Holland, thank you. Okay, thank you. So that was Catherine St. George and Stacy, can I get the last name? Stacy? Okay, we'll call the vote. And that carries. Last call. Okay, thank you. So moving then to our, the first of the added delegations, first we have Jason Truman, who will again speak to council with respect to consideration of an interim control bylaw.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Patterson, councillors. So I don't have a formal script here, so it's going to be a little bit more offhand, and I'm just going to tell you again some personal stories and some observations that I'm seeing with respect to some of the building that's going on in Sidnum District. So again, my name's Jason Truman, married, young kids, they go to Winston, moved back to Kingston in 2010. And I'm not a urban planner, but it's actually imagination, I'm not a contractor. I'm just a concerned taxpayer who cares a lot about my district and my city. Sally and Meredith both spoke about, you know, personal situations that they've unfortunately encountered. And what I want to do is emphasize the urgency of the potential for passing the interim bylaw. What, the concern we have, and this really goes to councillor George's question as well, is there's, if there's a concern that there's going to be additional bylaws imposed, then there's going to be this big push. And without bylaws to protect the push and significant renovations from taking place, you're going to, right now, let's say we're losing two households, and again, I don't have the stats, the statistics, I don't have the Republican alternative facts, I just have my own, my own observations. We're losing maybe two, two family households a month to become student rentals in Sidnum District. And we're losing a lot of family, a lot of friends to, to, outside Sidnum District. So there's, there's three things that I think, you know, Sidnum District has gone through over the last couple of years. One, obviously, we lost KCVI. You know, we moved to the district for Winston to be, our kids to be able to walk to school, and then KC. We have numerous store closings on Princess Street that happen unfortunately more frequently than, than any of us would like to see. And then, thirdly, now we have the student encroachment, the student housing encroachment. So I was a Queens University student, I'm very familiar with the ghetto, you know, there's homes there still, and we have some awesome contractors here, and they're going to be speaking a little bit. You know, they're not responsible for some of the homes, but you wouldn't want to sit down on the couch, like it's, you know, it's just sketchy. Some of these do need complete rebuilds and complete tear downs, but they're, they're more within the university district itself. I wouldn't say that some of the, the actual neighborhoods and communities have to go through that and shouldn't go through that. So we have frustration, we have a lot of homeowners who are growing concerned, and they're, they're leaving. Families have been leaving, families are going to continue to leave. And you may think, well, this isn't really affect my constituents and my, my community, but ultimately it will. You may have one or two families that are leaving currently out of Sidnum District, maybe they go live in, you know, Bay Ridge, the west, or maybe they live across the Causeway or north of the 401. And that ultimately puts some, a little bit of pressure on, on affordable housing, because you're, you're getting pros, you're getting physicians, you're getting people work at the hospitals and the university who currently walk to work, and now they're going to go and commute. So that also puts some burden on traffic. Couple families not going to make a difference. 50, 200, 1,000 families, and we're getting there. That's going to put a lot more pressure on, on the outlying suburbia of Greater Kingston. So something that it does impact your constituents. We actually, and Mike Preston's here, we're actually looking at enclosing our back porch. And if that means we have to wait three months, six months, even potentially a year, preferably not, before we did that, I'm fine if that means that we save another, another family household. Okay? So I, I get councillor George's question about the contractors, my brother's a contractor. We certainly don't want to hinder their employment, they're very dependent, obviously, the plumbers, electricians, the designers, contractors. My feeling is, A, if council can make this a priority, it's not going to take a year. There's been, this study's been going on, on this issue for decades. So do we really need to do another full land use study? I'm skeptical. If council make this a priority and put it in planning and zoning, this could be done in three months. So it is interim, and it is short term, but if we save some households now, it's, it's going to make a long, a difference long-term.
30 seconds.
You know, right now, we do have store closings on Princess Street, and what's happening is they're going to the West End, they're closing altogether, and we're getting dollar stores, and we're getting burger shops. We're getting stores that cater to the students, and that's going to continue to grow. So just think about that when you're going to vote, okay? This is an all-star council, it really is. Like, I've looked and read about other councils, and you guys are actually getting stuff done. And you work, you work well together, you, you know, maybe have some personal agendas, but for the most part, you're very, very productive. So please make this a priority and hopefully prioritize Kingston.
Thank you very much. Questions? Councillor Neil?
Thank you. You mentioned a back porch that you wanted to enclose. I'll, I'll ask this clarifying question when we get to being able to ask staff, but are you aware that it's my understanding, I believe, that anything that doesn't add bedrooms to an existing structure would, would be able to get a building permit? So you may very well be able to enclose a back porch. So that was my question, whether you was aware of that.
I, I've read it, I'm not as familiar, obviously, as, as the individual who wrote the article. Like I said, there's a lot of alternative facts taking place right now, a lot of fear mongering that's taking place. We do have some contractors kind of running around telling realtors and vice versa, you know, this is, this is a hammer on all construction within Kingston, and that's not necessarily the, the truth. And again, if you make this a priority, this can be done rather quickly, and no one's going to be negatively impacted, and the entire city will benefit.
Councillor Turner?
Thank you. And through you, Mayor Patterson. A question for you, sir. You said 1,000 families have left?
No.
You did. But, so could you define 1,000 families? Like, where did they leave from?
No, I was just, fair, fair. So let me clarify. So I said, you know, one or two families, maybe it goes to 10 or 50, and, and this ultimately will impact where they're moving to as far as affordable housing, as far as transit, as far as commuting. When we get there, when we get to 500 or 1,000 families, which will ultimately happen, because there is discussions taking place in the schoolyard, in, you know, dinner parties, things like that, people are going, are growing increasingly concerned that the high school's gone, the shops are all going to the West End. Now we have students on each side of our, our house, we're trying to get them to bed at nine o'clock on a Thursday night, exams just ended, the kids aren't going to sleep that night. So it, it is a growing concern, and there will be, you know, for example, up to 1,000 families that ultimately leave Sidnum District and move to some of these other neighborhoods.
Okay, I see what you're saying. It will be, so you're painting, in a way, an Armageddon as you have already said.
So that's, that's not, that's not a question.
Anyway, that's conjecture. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Stroud?
Yes, thank you, your worship. Mr. Truman, so you seem to have a sort of a realistic outlook in general, you seem to be looking at the big picture. So why is it from a, from a priority standpoint, more important to change the bylaws to have planned development that we think is desirable, that meets the needs of all residents, students and everybody else? Why is it important to have a balanced plan with updated bylaws? And why is it so urgent? Could you elaborate a little bit on that, please?
Well, again, it goes back to if, if there's concern that this interim bylaw is going to provide a limited window for contractors and landlords to say, we need to do this now. And if they know that it's going to be delayed a year, then there's going to be an incredible push to go and have so many renovations done versus if you can go and just say, you know what, we're going to hold off, and again, I don't think it'd be a full year, but we're going to hold off for three months, for six months. It gives planning and, and city, city council and, and the different planners to go and, and create the bylaw to allow for a living room extension or a new kitchen in Portsmouth or wherever that may happen. I mean, everybody wants to continually improve their living standards, but it's going to prevent some of the pictures that we saw earlier of adding another four bedrooms to the back of somebody's house.
Councillor Shol?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Would you agree that one of our problems is that we really can't quantify if a house is owner occupied or a rental? We have no ability to count them. The city can't collate that information because it's not ours to, to have. Would you agree with that?
That's fair. We've had numerous, I do agree, we've had numerous conversations, you know. I would like to see, so I, I own a rental property as well, and, in Sidnum District. And I have no problem paying more tax for that rental property versus my home. So if we're looking at tax increases, this could be a way to do it, is that they pay more tax if you have a rental property versus if it's your, if you're the, the primary resident and owner of that facility. You know, and along this line, and it's a little bit off course, but I know we have Principal Wolf here, no pressure. So, and I know we have, you know, the, the chairperson of the Heritage Committee, so we have the, we have space in Kingston for more university residences, and whether it's the women's prison, which is protected by Heritage, and the university want to build more residences, there is some common sense approach to help put the students into more apartment building-like complexes instead of taking over residential homes.
Yep.
Thanks. Just to follow up, you'd mentioned you'd be willing to pay more tax if it was a rental. I think the usual in cities would be to license rentals, which has been brought up occasionally and gets the same reaction as we have tonight. But that would be how most cities would handle, being able to know if the house is a rental by being able to license it.
I think that's a great point.
So, so was that a question?
Yes, I was seeing, would you see that, agree that that is the more likely way it would happen?
So I absolutely agree. And, you know, arguably, somebody who's renting a property is not going to take the same care and... is not going to take the same care and custodial work if they live in the property. And there's more work that has to be done, whether the garbage man has to go and, and retrieve the garbage can from three houses down, the blue box is blowing down the street, because, you know, as a student, and you got an exam, and it's going to take priority, and if the, the beer bong table doesn't get removed since September, then it doesn't get removed, I don't really care. So it's also just, you know, being proud of our city and the aesthetics and, and what we're selling to a company like Fahey or whomever, I'm sure in Fahey's, you know, due diligence of Kingston, a vibrant bet downtown was, was something they considered.
Okay, seeing no other questions, thank you very much. Okay, our next delegation is Francis Campbell, who will speak to council with respect to consideration, again, of the interim control bylaw.
Mayor Patterson, councillors, staff and guests, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today on the interim control bylaw. This bylaw, at its core, shows an elitist exclusion-based movement towards isolating the people that are consistently subjected to criticism by the city. Simply put, you're designing a bylaw that aims to stop a particular person from living in a specific area due to their status and age as a student. Its discriminatory roots have far-reaching implications on the mutually beneficial relationship that we have. Students already feel segregated from the Kingston community, and this bylaw will only push them farther away. Our retention rates sit at two percent, as does the vacancy rate. The City of Kingston has managed to create an artificial market where housing in the downtown core disregards any appropriate pricing scheme, and students feel no desire to stay in Kingston after graduation. The bylaw will only add to the problem. You're setting in stone your priorities for the future, defining contempt and neglect as your preferences for interactions with students. You're generalizing the entire student body by the behavior of a few, ensuring that they all struggle to find financially accessible housing and isolate them into smaller and smaller areas, such that they feel no need to venture out into the community. This bylaw fits the same categorizations of the previous studies that have been done over the years. Similar to the 1990 Student Housing Review, concerns were identified with respect to the discriminatory nature of the separate treatment of students, and we are facing that same issue today. As I said before, hiding behind the idea of stable neighborhoods and protecting families is a thinly veiled commentary on the behavior of students and shows a complete lack of respect. Of course, I'm not going to stand here and defend the behaviors of students that might affect local residents, but no city public policy should aim to affect the entire student body in this manner. Not only does this bylaw bypass any responsible public process, it does nothing to fix the ongoing problems that this motion is suggesting. These are conversations to be had in respectful collaborative environments where all the stakeholders are consulted. These are not to be designed by a small clique of singular neighborhoods pushing to have a motion swept discreetly through council. Of the eighteen thousand students that I represent, the only ones that know this is going on know because I have been able to bring it to their attention in a short timeframe. We are here because we are student representatives, and we want to be a part of these discussions, yet we are consistently never consulted. By shutting students out of your neighborhoods, you're limiting the economic purchasing power of the student body that the downtown core depends on. By limiting the housing supply in the area, you're forcing students to pay for more schooling that they already struggle to afford. I've lived in Kingston for about fourteen years now, and I've never seen anything except constant animosity between students and their resident neighbors. Isn't it about time that we do something differently? Instead of just aggressive opposition-based blocks on development that won't just hurt students but also young families and newcomers to the city, why don't we look for accountability measures from, for landlords and students? Work together to form recommendations going to the Landlord Tenant Board or Residential Tenancies Act, or devise stricter lease requirements and even nuisance bylaws. That's why we're planning the University District Summit on February 11th, to bring together the stakeholders of near campus neighborhoods, to work out issues of accountability, relationships, development and quality of life in a collaborative environment. We're bringing together keen individuals from the relevant parties that want to see positive change for the future. We're not looking for individuals that wish to seek out students and remove them from the neighborhoods that they believe should belong to only local residents. You say this is not an anti-student movement, yet your actions speak much louder than your words. How do you think it feels when you tell someone they don't, that they don't belong on your street, and that the actions of their peers rejects any semblance of respect moving forward? Who cites a bylaw praising the, the successes of post-secondary institutions, then speaks of the spread of students across the city as though it is a cancer, or describes protecting neighborhoods, families and a crumbling downtown core as though it is a war zone? Think closely about how you're voting today. Are you looking to shut out the people that can help this great city thrive in the future? Or are you going to vote against this motion and work towards a common goal of community collaboration and mutual respect? Thank you.
Thank you. So, thank you, I will just remind the audience here that, that applause is not permitted in council chambers, but, uh, but thank you. We will move on to questions, I saw a few hands. First up is Deputy Mayor Holland.
Thank you, your worship. And through you, um, how would you propose, uh, the city increase the, the supply of desirable and affordable housing with or without the interim control bylaw?
That's a good question. So for a long time, we've been talking about infill for the past couple of years as the primary source of, of adding to the housing supply, because, uh, you know, taller buildings don't fit within the official plan guidelines. So at this point, I mean, not only does, um, multi-resident buildings, does it fit for student accommodation, it also fits for the accommodation of newcomers to the City of Kingston. So I think when you're building infill development, and it fits with the existing official plan requirements, and it is available to people that are also not students, then it's the, the perfect scenario for it now.
Counselor Bell.
Thank you, your worship, and through you. Mr. Campbell, thank you for your presentation. I was just curious, do you admit that there probably is some type of a problem with some of these quote-unquote monster houses, and that the intent of, I think a lot of people agree with the intent of this motion, would you say that that's correct?
Yeah, so I understand that there are different motivations going towards this, this motion, but the principle of the motion itself is based on keeping students out of neighborhoods and protecting neighborhoods for families. So I would agree that monster houses, uh, where you have a family home that now has eight bedrooms in it is an issue, but family homes that have additions with multiple apartments, not just more bedrooms, is not an issue.
So would you agree that this is probably like hitting a nail with a sledgehammer and probably a little bit generalizing this whole issue to a few bad apples?
Exactly. If I can borrow the words of someone I was talking to earlier, it's like hitting a spider with a sledgehammer.
Right, okay, thank you.
Counselor Neal.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Campbell. A, a couple of questions. First off, um, you're aware, I believe, or I would assume you're aware, that, um, apartments are not, uh, being restricted in the current proposal.
Yeah, so they're, do you, sorry, do you want me to jump in now?
Yeah, go ahead.
So they're not being restricted at this point, but the current standards that we have set in place, and when you see someone who brings forward an apartment building and you have a loud, um, group of residents that monopolize discussions in order to limit the height of buildings and limit the, the density of apartment buildings in this area, those developments fall through. So you, so we don't have the infill development, or, or with this motion, we wouldn't have the infill development going on, and then we also can't get those apartment buildings built because of the loud voices that sort of shroud them.
I, in my time on planning recently, I don't recall a lot of...
So, question, question only, please.
Yes, my last question. Um, are you familiar, I know that there was a survey done among students, uh, just a few years ago, and I believe students said they preferred two or three bedroom and not eight, nine, seven bedroom, which seems to be the monster house approach.
So we're also running a survey right now, and we have approximately five hundred responses. Majority from students, but it's also going out to residents and landlords. And what we found is asking similar questions about number of bedrooms and style of housing, and the primary, uh, response that we've got is family-style homes. Um, and, and it fits within the four to six, uh, bedroom. So I actually originally thought the same as you, though the data that we found doesn't fit that.
Thank you.
Counselor Stroud.
Mr. Campbell, are you aware that discrimination in Canada is a crime?
Yes.
So you've accused council of a crime?
So...
It's just a bit of a sledgehammer, don't you think?
Yeah, so, I mean, it's the same thing that we've come across in the student housing, uh, the 1990 Student Housing Review that was done, where it was found to be discriminatory to separate between students and local residents. So this is the exact same case. So you can't argue that it's not discriminatory.
So that's, that's two questions, Counselor Stroud.
No further questions.
Thank you. Counselor Turner.
Thank you, and through you, Mayor Patterson, thank you for your presentation, and I'd like to know, you are extending an olive branch to the community, you will let us all know about that and get the word out? You're extending an olive branch out to the community about your information that you're passing forward?
Yes, yes, definitely.
And you will get that out to the community through the newspapers or...
Yep. Yeah, we have it currently going out through the district boards that I sit on.
Okay.
But hopefully we'll get some spread through city communications or...
Perfect, thank you very much.
Okay, seeing no other questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, our next delegation is Michael Keen from Fotan Consultants, who will also be speaking to council with respect to consideration of an interim control bylaw.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, staff, members of the public. My name is Mike Keen, and I'm a land use planner with Fotan Consultants. And, uh, I learned about this bylaw roughly two weeks ago by, by colleagues at one of my competitor companies, IBI, and they alerted our company to this, showing our common interests in such a bylaw in the city. And so when we, we started looking into this bylaw, we realized that there were concerns that had been brought to council's attention suggesting that student housing is destabilizing neighborhoods. And the main claim is that your official plan and zoning bylaws are not capable of managing this type of housing. And as a result, we now have a potential proposal for an interim control bylaw before this council, uh, whether or not it comes tonight. And as a result, I've had an opportunity to speak with many different people. I've spoken with the province, with people that build affordable housing, developers, student housing providers, investors, people that are trying to convert rental homes, uh, back into homes for their families. And what I can tell you is that nine out of ten, those people will be impacted by this bylaw. And so as a result, there are a few things I'd like to bring to council's attention that I hope you'll consider before you pass a bylaw of this nature. One is people zoning, another is conflicts with the Planning Act, provincial policy statement and your own official plan, unintended consequences and legal ramifications. So just quickly on people zoning, students are an identifiable group of people, and as a result, a bylaw such as an interim control bylaw that is intending to, uh, prevent bedrooms from being built in particular certainly can be construed as discriminatory. So this is something that has to be considered. I was involved with a zoning bylaw amendment, or rather, a consent application on 39 Churchill two years ago, and to read a quote from the Ontario Municipal Board, the member said, "Neither the zoning bylaw nor the act can be seen as providing the authority for either the city or the board to zone people. In the same vein, local residents should not and cannot expect the board to ignore the planning rationale as a means to curtail living accommodations for students in their neighborhood." So I just remind council that an interim control bylaw of this nature has the potential to be construed as people zoning. The second issue relates to, uh, Planning Act offenses, official plan offenses, provincial policy statement offenses. One of the primary ones that you should take note of is secondary suites. The Planning Act permits secondary suites in single detached, semi-detached and row houses. It's arguable that the city's official plan is already too strict on the Planning Act, by the way, and, and I can tell you, I do a lot of zoning amendments for secondary suites. So that's one, one part. Briefly, provincial policy statement speaks a lot to appropriate intensification. Your official plan has policies to direct that. Your official plan has policies that say, we want the urban boundary to intensify by nine percent. Some of that happens by these small intensification, uh, applications that happen in the three districts that are subject to tonight's discussion. So, quick summary, it's my opinion that the interim control bylaw is not consistent with your official plan, and it potentially impacts and, and offends the Planning Act and provincial policy. One of the most important, and this is the result of the many letters that, that both the company I work for and IBI and others have provided to you, and it's the consequences that happen with a bylaw of this nature. There are applications that are in effect now that will, there are many that would be stopped until the bylaw is resolved. So I have an application that will come before, uh, the committee soon enough, that's actually a person who owns a house in Sydenham that's currently a rental, they've bought it to convert it back to a family home for themselves.
Thirty seconds.
And they won't be able to. There's a property that is also a, uh, it's also zoned, um, as an apartment right now, and it needs a zoning amendment to allow a secondary suite. So just pay attention to the legal ramifications, I will provide those in writing to, uh, the Clerk's Department. So in conclusion, I would ask that you not pass the bylaw, that you take note of history, 1991 was an attempt to pass the bylaw before. Uh, there's many specific bylaws in place, and right now you have an information report.
Thank you, thank you very much. Are there any questions? Counselor Stroud.
Thank you, thank you, your worship. Sorry, I just wanted to focus on one thing you said. You said, this is great news, there's a family that wants to convert a student rental in my district, uh, or what's a rental in my district, back to a family home and occupy themselves. Why is that not permitted under the interim control bylaw exactly?
It, well, it will need a zoning bylaw. They would like to propose an addition to the home that will be an expansion to the current home. As a result, it will have to do Heritage Impact Report and a zoning amendment to specify whether or not the addition is appropriate. It will add bedrooms.
Right, so it's just a little confusing, because the, the issue that's getting us to this point, we're considering this interim control bylaw, is the reverse, where people are adding space to add bedrooms to rent them out. You're saying that they're, they're converting back from rental, but they're still adding space, therefore, therefore they just need to apply for a, a minor variance to get...
They'll need a zoning amendment, not only a minor variance.
So, so they're doing major, a major change to the footprint then?
Uh, I don't know, I, I mean, it depends. I mean, it's a, it's an addition to the home, it's a small lot. It has a detached garage, so it has to be carefully designed so that the home will still have a nice yard between the garage and the home. So, but I mean, the, that's the typical process in the city, is to do a zoning bylaw amendment. Most application, most applications that I have in the three districts, uh, are for zoning bylaw amendments and not minor variances.
Thank you for clarifying. Counselor Schell.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Um, you mentioned appropriate intensification. What do you consider that to mean?
Well, certainly, I think to respond to that question, I think, you know, particularly the council members that are on planning committee see the applications that not only my company presents, but others present to them. And we're talking, we're not talking about apartment buildings in these areas, we're talking about conversions to, uh, two units, three units, four units, on rare occasion maybe six units depending on the size of the site. But again, because they're already regulated, because in, in my mind, the zoning bylaw is already quite tight because of those changes made in 91. So it, it's, it's all about appropriate scale, justifying it through planning reports and ultimately getting a recommendation from staff before you make a decision.
Thank you, and just to follow up... Thank you, and just to follow up, that the type of housing that we're discussing tonight relates to additions and such that don't require you to come to planning, they just can happen. So that's an entirely different discussion we would have.
I'm not quite sure it does, because I can give you another example where I have an application that will go for a public meeting on February 5th. Arguably, right now, it's a monster home, it's two units, 17 bedrooms, and I am proposing to not add any area, not add any bedrooms, but to subdivide it into five units. And I'm pretty sure that application will be caught by the bylaw if it's passed, because it's not an apartment, it's a, it will go from a monster house to a townhouse. So these are things that I just suggest that staff needs to provide you with an actual opinion and not just an information report before you move forward.
Okay, seeing no other questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, our next delegation is John Grenville and Christine Sibnovich, who will speak to council with respect to report number 20 from the CAO Options to fill the vacant councillor
Good evening, Mayor Patterson and councillors. My name is John Grenville. I'm here along with others behind me, representing the Coalition of Kingston Communities. The mission of the Coalition of Kingston Communities is to improve processes of civic engagement and accountability. We're here tonight to respectfully request that you hold a by-election to fill the vacancy on council left by Richard Allen's resignation. And tonight, we're talking about a vacancy in Countryside District, but the request is really applicable to council vacancies generally. As you well know, the Municipal Elections Act gives you two options to fill the vacancy, one to make an appointment, and two to hold a by-election. An appointment might seem the most efficient course of action. You can make the decision with the vote of council, it's quick, and it's inexpensive. However, it's plagued with problems of fairness. To go from a councillor chosen by the electors of Countryside to someone chosen by 12 people who don't live in Countryside seems anti-democratic, not to mention all of the baggage that councillors inevitably bring with them. As a historian, an appointment by council seems closer to the early 19th century politics than the representative democracy that we consider to be part of our rights as citizens today. Any method of appointment is problematic and susceptible to criticism from affected and disaffected members of the community, especially those who are most affected in Countryside District. Choosing one of the failed Countryside candidates flouts the will of the electorate and negates the votes of all those who voted for the successful candidate. A democratic vote has the merit of producing an outcome that cannot be faulted by anyone in terms of the fairness of the process. Although holding an election would be more costly, it would be shameful if the city of Kingston decided against a democratic process simply on the basis of expense. The value of fair representation should not be measured in monetary terms. However, the estimate of $150,000 to, $150,000 to hold a by-election in Countryside does need a closer look. There are 6,999 registered voters in Countryside District in the last election, which means that the estimated cost for the by-election is more than $21 per registered voter. I think, I looked at a number of by-elections in other municipalities, all held within the last three years, and found that most estimates in the staff reports were in the range of $3 to $6 per registered voter, as you'll see from the handout that I distributed. Cost is a factor, but I contend that it is not as significant as the staff report suggests. Your staff report also notes that the turnout for by-elections is 20% or less. And yes, I agree, the voter turnout for by-elections is typically lower, and a by-election certainly in the winter is going to be lower too. But my observation from looking at other municipal by-elections is that 20% is on the low side of the range. I would suggest that you also need to balance that expected turnout, drop in turnout with the higher-than-average interest in Countryside. That district had the third-highest voter turnout in the last election. It was 46%, about 20% higher than the average turnout for Kingston. If the next representative for Countryside is to be someone who truly represents the residents of the district, then it's imperative that the residents of Countryside get a chance to express their preference. On behalf of the Coalition, I hope that council affirms the ideals of democracy and that you decide that a by-election should be held to fill the vacant seat in Countryside District. Thank you for waiving bylaw one and giving the Coalition an opportunity to speak tonight, and thank you to my colleagues for coming too.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Counselor Neal.
Yes, thank you very much for the information. I did, however, find out that there was one recent by-election that you missed, Whitby. Are you aware that Whitby came in at $35,000 less than the $100,000 that was approved? And they had a full case of internet voting and tabulation in their election? And they increased by about 3% over their general election. Did you have that information?
No, no, I didn't. I did, the information was not easy to find, but, but what, I mean, what I did find was a fair amount of consistency, and you'll see on the list that I had there, Mississauga had $9.23 per registered voter, and somebody else, oh, the regional municipality Waterloo had a very low rate on a, on a per-registered voter, and I kind of knocked them out. But the majority of the, the majority of the municipalities were between $3 and $6, and that's quite different than what's being suggested is required for Kingston. And I'm not to say that that's the wrong number, because I don't know the basis for the number, but I do know that it is significantly different than other municipalities who are holding by-elections when you look at it on a per-registered voter basis.
And again, I want to thank you for the work you've done on this. Did you have an opportunity to check with any of these clerks to find out what the actuals were? Because I understand that Pickering came well below the $100,000 that had been forecast, as did the township of Brock, as did Whitby, so...
I took the estimates at face value and expended as much time as I could possibly spare in getting the information that I got.
I appreciate that, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counselor Shelton.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Just to follow up on the idea of a template, so basically, did they just, they gave you a number, but they didn't show you how they got to the number, where the rentals were, what the expenses were, the machinery? It wasn't like a template form that everybody used, the same template?
No, it wasn't. What, and I did not contact them. What I did was I read the, either the staff report or the minutes for the municipality, for the municipalities that were holding by-elections. And so basically, I got the same information that you received in your staff report, and that was that the estimate that the Clerk's Office was giving to council to enable them to make a decision was X number of dollars, and that was all expenses. And then I went to the ward, to the district, to the municipality, wherever it was the information was, to determine the number of registered voters for that, for that ward, usually from the previous election or from the by-election results itself. And then on that basis, came up with the, with the cost per registered voter. So I was using the same information that you were provided with, not the actual information as to what it, what it did cost, and, but the figures were relatively consistent between $3 and $6 per registered voter.
Thank you, but I, thanks for that, but I do get the impression that generally each council said you may spend up to.
That's correct.
And generally, they didn't.
That's, oh, I don't know about that.
Well, I just heard a couple.
Based, based on the recent information, all I was looking at was purely the estimates.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other questions, thank you very much. Okay, our next delegation, Patrick Powers, Mark Peabody, Matt Gervin, and Mike Preston will appear before council to speak to consideration of an interim control bylaw.
Thank you, Mayor, councillors. My name is Pat Powers. Just here to give you a little bit of background and what I think might be some unintended consequences of your interim bylaw. For those of you that don't know myself and colleagues, we do probably the majority of historical restoration and renovation in the city of Kingston. I've been in the business for 25 years, I've worked with St. Lawrence College, I've worked with the ministry, I've worked with the QVCI Building Internship Program. I currently have two apprentices on my books, and the majority of my business is taking old houses and repurposing, repurposing them, adding on, which involves extensions, and a lot of historical restoration. We've received several awards over the years from you people for our projects, with the acknowledgement that there is a vibrant trade community in Kingston that tries to do things right. The intent of your moratorium, while we agree with the intent, unfortunately, the unintended consequences and what I would call collateral damage would, and I'm not being dramatic, but it would put people like me out of business. You're looking at a period of what has been suggested might be three months, but in reality could very well be two years. The building department last year ran through about $10 million of renovation permit fees to the city. My own company is responsible for between $1 and $2 million of that. Behind me, we probably represent $4 to $5 million of renovation work, which, from your own awards, has been the kind of work that you would like to see done in the city of Kingston. The problem with bylaws like this tends to be in the writing, and that's why I'd like to be very specific in my two points. The intensified residential use that you're qualifying here would mean the addition of any gross floor area to a house would not be allowed. Came up Counselor Neal earlier. That means that any family, any house that wants to put on a porch, a sunroom, a kitchen, anything at all, would not be allowed to until your interim control bylaw is done with. If the effect is to, I'll use the analogy of an airport. You've got an airport that's running successfully, but you've got one bad airline, a monster home. If the effect is to shut that down, you don't shut the airport down. You're undermining the very people in town that, by your own acknowledgement, are the ones that are helping rebuild, revitalize, and make our nice historical city sustainable. The effects are real, they're not minor. I can't afford to take three, six, nine months off of work while the city sorts out problems that they've been trying to sort out for the 25 years that I've been here. Our city's understaffed, they work extremely hard, from the building department, the people that I deal with, but the problem is a lack of enforcement. The current bylaws that are in place, with a little tweaking, are good bylaws. So all I'm suggesting is that be careful with how you word a bylaw like this, that you don't end up, in a sense, destroying the very fabric and the thread of the good people of Kingston that continue to do good work to make our city the type of place that people want to come to. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? Counselor Stroud.
Yes, I liked your analogy about the airport and the, you don't shut down the whole airport, you just shut down the bad, the one bad airline. So what your argument amounts to, though, is shutting down the debate on the bylaw because it is a non-starter, that's what you're suggesting. So what do you suggest we use? You're saying the bylaws are adequate, yet we're seeing an increasing amount of monster homes leading to the other delegations that we've heard from tonight. So what do you suggest, as a highly respected professional in the business, that we change in order to change the situation to help these people that are having an obvious problem?
Well, a couple of things first come to mind. One existing bylaw pertains to the average depth of houses on each side. What that refers to, if I happen to live in a 100-foot house, and my neighbor lives in a 50-foot house, and the next neighbor lives in a 100-foot house, the 50-foot neighbor can add on the average depth of the houses on either side. The other accompanying bylaw is to the effect of you're not allowed to have no more than five unrelated people living in an existing house. Enforcement of those types of bylaws would stop a 15, 16 monster home addition because you just wouldn't be able to have that many unrelated people living in a house. Tightening up the zoning restrictions where if someone wants to put on a modest addition, and they can show and demonstrate to the city that it's for a family-type purpose, which should be very easy to do with plans, those are the type of enforcements that I see we should be able to do very easily.
Thank you, that was very helpful. Your first suggestion has great merit. I believe the second one is along the lines of the discriminatory problem that's already been mentioned, that it's a non-starter. I have a second question. So you, you say that we, that you, we wouldn't, a homeowner wouldn't be able to make a renovation for a kitchen or a mudroom or a sunroom if the interim bylaw was in place?
According to the wording of the bylaw, yes.
Yeah. What do you say to the, to the staff members that have told me that that is not the case, that you can apply for a minor variance for those type of things to, and have it measured against the interim control bylaw?
So now you're suggesting that I need to apply for a minor variance, where that takes an extra few months and an extra few thousand dollars? For what reason?
So, no, no...
In a sense, you're saying I can land my plane if I'm willing to pay you extra. You've shut down the airport unless I'm willing to go through a new procedure, cost an additional amount of money, while you sort out your problems. Doesn't seem fair.
So, no, 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 no. Question has been asked, answer has been given, thank you. Counselor Neal.
Just very quickly, just to set the record straight, you mentioned something about five unrelated people in a household. I believe that was tossed out by human rights years ago in any community that had such a bylaw. And frankly, I support, I supported it then, I support it now. We shouldn't do people zoning, which is what happens when you say that.
Question, Counselor Neal?
So, are you, I...
Question?
I can say, are you aware that it's no longer the case?
No, I was throwing it out there off the top of my head. I was looking for, you need obviously some sort of restrictions to stop these monster homes, and we do have to be very careful in our wording. I was recently at the OMB, actually, for one of my own projects, and the first thing that came out of the judge's mouth was, "We don't zone people in the province of Ontario." And I agree with that, which only goes to showcase, though, the problem we have. How do you stop a monster development that upsets the neighborhood and at the same time protect builders like ourselves that are doing the right thing? It's not an easy solution, I agree. But to blank everybody under one interim control bylaw like that, I think just negatively affects everybody, to a much larger degree, I think, than people realize.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Sannick.
Thank you, Your Worship, and thank you for your delegation. I know that Kingston's not the only city with this problem. Doing a Google search, there's also Durham region, right, because they have university... Doing a Google search, there's also Durham region, right, because they have universities, Hamilton. Do you know any city that is a good example, that Kingston can look towards, that might have this better figured out than Kingston does now?
I, I'll defer to Mac here. I believe Ottawa has gone through something similar to this just recently.
I don't really know the details of, but I know that Ottawa went through, I think, I sent an email on it yesterday, I think it was five or six years ago. And their, and their interim report was not nearly as draconian as what this one is. It, they gave some restrictions, but didn't, didn't cut out all building and all, you know, and all, all changed the girls' floor area.
Thank you. So you sent that yesterday to council?
No, I didn't. I just got an email on it today, actually, from someone who had looked into the Ottawa situation, and I could forward that on.
Thank you.
Councilor Shell.
Thank you very much. Just so that I can, we can all hear it, you agree with the intent of the bylaw?
Yes, I do.
This, this business, and, and realistically, you could have worked on a heritage home and made it absolutely magnificent, and you could wind up with a monster home right beside it, under our current bylaws.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other questions, thank you very much. Okay, our final delegation this evening, we have Catherine St. George, Stacy Post, who will speak to new motion number one.
Your Worship, council members, we're here to speak on behalf of local public servants, of which, regionally, there's almost 7,000 of us, so your constituents. We're here seeking allies and advocates and hoping you'll raise your voices with us in requesting of the federal government that they fix this fiasco that they call the centralized federal pay system. Come February, couple more weeks, we've been with this new pay system a whole year, and we're no closer to getting it fixed at all. No light at the end of the tunnel. The government releases numbers proudly saying they're down to 8,000 cases of the backlog. That's the backlog before July 1st. That's not even touching what's happened after that. Every payday brings new issues, and we never know who it's going to affect. It's always a surprise, but I do know who it always affects. It's affecting the people who can least afford it. Students last summer crying in our office because they couldn't pay their tuition, they couldn't pay their rent. We still have students on the base that haven't received their last paycheck from August, it's January now. It always affects people coming back off sick leave, long-term sick leave, maternity people. I have lots of examples, but I'm going to give you one of the nonsense we have to deal with. A casual person who's taken a 90-day contract, so someone who doesn't have a lot of employment behind them, he didn't get paid. So we, we seeked an emergency payment for him. He was told he was not entitled to an emergency payment because he'd been issued a check. Well, we said, "No, he didn't get a check." They said, "Well, he had to prove he didn't cash it." So weeks later, we finally convinced them to run a check search. Lo and behold, it hadn't left the pay center. That's the nonsense we're dealing with. We need your voices added to ours to get this fixed. We need help. Catherine?
As I stand here, my test is tightening and my stomach is in knots. Tomorrow is supposed to be my payday. I have no idea if my bank account will receive that money, nor do any of my 7,000 people that are in your, in your area. That also means that if I do win the lottery, as we call it now, because that's how frequently pay issues happen, you might get part of your pay, a third of your pay, all of your pay, you don't know. I'm not spending very much money in the local economy. I am not going to the restaurants, I am not buying things downtown because I don't know if I'm going to get paid from one payday to the next. It means, and this has been going on, as Stacy mentioned, for almost a year, 7,000 people are not spending money in your economy because we don't know if we are going to get paid. If you did work, would you not want to be paid according to the terms of your agreement? And that's what we're asking for.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? Councilor Neal?
Is there any kind of proposed potential fix for this that, that has been considered? I've, I've heard of a regional pay center or something like that. Can you speak to that?
We've heard rumors of a regional pay center. In my opinion, that would be a very good thing, because then perhaps they could bring back the trained compensation agents that were laid off from the area that have years of experience. We don't know if it's going to happen. Right now, they're throwing a lot of good money after bad with the Band-Aids that they're fixing. For example, the Toronto Call Center that alleviates so you're not on, online for hours waiting to get ahold of someone. Literally, it's just a person with no training answering the phone. They don't even give out case numbers anymore, and they say someone will call you in two days, and no one ever calls.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other questions, thank you very much. Okay, so moving on, we have no further delegations. We do have one briefing this evening. So I asked Gerard Hunt, Chief Administrative Officer, to provide introductory remarks, and then Dr. Daniel Wolfe, Principal and Vice Chancellor of Queens University, will appear before council to speak to Clause 2 of Report Number 19 received from the CAO with respect to the City of Kingston and the Queens University's strategic partnership.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Just wanted to provide some opening remarks with respect to Report Number 17042. This report is seeking council endorsement of a strategic partnership with Queens University and the City of Kingston. For years, the city and Queens University have had a long history of collaboration on many initiatives, and past several months, we've been discussing ways to move forward in a, in a collaborative fashion to be able to continue to deal with council's priorities, a number of which would include community partnerships, the potential for further economic development, advancing innovation and research, retention of talent, in migration and workforce development opportunities, and youth employment, to name a few. We're very fortunate in Kingston to have the institutional partners that we have and to have three significant and ranked, highly ranked academic institutions. Queens has, has set standards across the country and across the world and is recognized, and their recent promotion and direction by Principal Wolfe with respect to foreign student and those seeking to study here is another example of putting Kingston and Queens on the map. Thank you, Dr. Wolfe, for that. Earlier this evening, I had the opportunity to attend a function in honor of Dr. Stephen List, the Vice Principal of Research, who is, is leaving Queens to pursue his work with Ryerson. And Dr. List, over the years, has been a leader at Innovation Park, as you all know, and we have worked closely with him, and we see the opportunities of moving forward on the Innovation Park agenda and continue to work with the university in that regard, and we're excited about that. So we have a number of things that I'd like to highlight for you tonight, simply developing experiential learning opportunities for students through internships and post-secondary graduation of employment programs, furthering the development of student-led entrepreneurs, entrepreneurial enterprises, building on the work currently done at Innovation Park and exploring future opportunities, and jointly pursuing further partnerships and investments in Kingston, including those from the federal and the provincial government. Mr. Mayor, with that, I'd like to invite Dr. Wolfe to say a few words.
Good evening, Mayor Patterson, councilors, and guests. It's a great pleasure to be here this evening to speak in support of the memorandum of understanding between Queens and the City of Kingston being considered by council tonight. Over the last several months, I've had the great pleasure of speaking with Merrick Patterson about this council's vision of Kingston as a smart and livable 21st-century city. Your commitment to partnering with educational institutions, associations, local entrepreneurs and businesses, and other levels of government to ensure that Kingston reaches its goals on this endeavor is commendable. By working together, Mayor Patterson and I believe that the city and Queens can help establish Kingston as a leader in attracting, supporting, and retaining the next generation of influencers, innovators, researchers, and entrepreneurs. At Queens, we've committed to fostering innovation, entrepreneurship, and economic development through teaching, research, technology transfer, and student involvement. And over the past several years, we have been working hard to increase our innovation and collaboration initiatives at Queens, including the Dun &amp; Deschpande Queens Innovation Center, Spark Studios, the Queens Startup Summit, and the creation of the Innovation and Wellness Center now underway at the former Physical Education Center at the corner of Union Street and Division Street. These centers play major roles in supporting the university's academic mission by encouraging, enabling, and supporting the innovation activities of our community members and local companies. And we believe that when given the opportunity to work collaboratively in diverse teams to address important problems and identify solutions, creative minds will yield benefits not only for the region but nationally and globally as well. We're already seeing the beginnings of Kingston's innovation ecosystem forming with companies such as Laser Depth Dynamics, proving how partnership between research and commercialization promises many advantages. Both the City of Kingston and Queens have a vested interest in enabling Kingston to attract businesses, investors, highly skilled job seekers, entrepreneurs, and innovators, students, and a diverse workforce. Together, we'll take action and encourage dialogue, partnerships, and economic development initiatives that build an innovative and prosperous city. I welcome your thoughts on this mutually beneficial agreement when it's presented later this evening, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from council? Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much. Okay, so moving on to petitions. Are there any petitions to present? Councilor Stroud.
Thank you, Your Worship. I rise to present this printout of an online petition with 130 names. The title of the petition is "Change the Bylaws in Kingston to Preserve Family Neighborhoods", signed by 130 people. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other petitions to present? Okay, thank you. Moving on, we have no motions of congratulations, recognition, sympathy, condolences, or speedy recovery. We have no deferred motions, so we will move right to new motion number two, as we've amended our agenda. Moved by Councilor Stroud, seconded by Councilor Shell, that council directs staff to undertake an appropriate land use study in respect of the municipality's existing policies and regulations regarding residential intensification within the areas generally identified as Portsmouth, Sidneyem, and Williamsville districts, or defined parts thereof, in order to provide a detailed assessment of development and/or conversion pressures and specific recommendations to guide the future of these areas. And that staff schedule a public meeting in March 2017 to hear from residents on the proposed interim control bylaw attached as Exhibit A to Report Number 17-050, as well as any other policy changes that could achieve development objectives within Williamsville, Sidneyem, and Portsmouth as defined by council. And that staff provide a comprehensive briefing at the beginning of the above-noted public meeting regarding the planning and legal aspects of the proposed interim control bylaw or any of other policy changes, including how the proposed interim control bylaw or any policy changes would affect homeowners wishing to undergo renovations for purposes other than to provide housing for tenants, and how the proposed interim control bylaw or any policy changes would or would not differentiate between uses in a dwelling if a renovation was proposed to increase gross floor area, and other issues raised to staff by residents regarding the enactment of the proposed interim control bylaw or any other policy changes. And that staff report back to council in April with a summary of the input gathered by staff at the above meeting and other means, and that the above-noted report include options on how to proceed to achieve the intent as outlined in new motion number two, approved by council on January the 10th, 2017. Councilor Stroud, you have the floor.
Thank you, Your Worship. So this conversation is well underway. We've already debated another motion related to this that set the ball roll last time, and staff has come back with a report and an actual draft bylaw, as requested, and everyone's had a chance to read it, and we've had reaction. There's no question that many people have weighed in on the subject. We heard several delegations tonight. We've, we've received dozens of emails as well on both sides of the issue, and I think that no matter what, I would say that we've already achieved one positive outcome, which is that we're having the conversation. And, Your Worship, I think that I, it would be my opinion to, to state that we need to identify some solutions. I mean, the, the solution, if, if the solution is to just not enact the bylaw and not do anything else, I think we can all agree that that would be a slap in the face of all those residents that are asking for help. The residents of my district are asking for help, they're asking for help repeatedly, and they asked me to do something about this in my door-to-door in 2014. This is the opportunity for me to personally come good on that promise, but it's also an opportunity for council to really think about this. It's, it's complicated, it's fraught with many political and other aspects, financial, the, the future of the economy, the future of the downtown, all these things play into it. I think, as one of our delegations said, Mr. Truman, you know, he called us an all-star council. I think that was a great compliment. I think that we'd be doing him and everyone else a disservice. Also, the contractors that came and spoke, that suggested that they are behind the, the intent of, of the bylaw, but we need to find either a better wording or another tool to use to achieve that objective. So just to look, just to summarize what this motion does, it does not ask for the interim control bylaw to be enacted. We need to digest what's in that interim control bylaw and measure it against the pros and cons, the, the benefits versus the costs. We need to do that as, as a group, and we need more time to do that. We also need to hear more, so that, I'll get back to the first clause, but we need to hear more from the public. So the public has spoken about it tonight, but there's many others in the public that will wish to speak as well. That's what the public meeting is for, it's proposed for March. That was a suggestion by the commissioner, that March would be a good timeline. And that's the third clause, sorry, the second clause. The third clause is the briefing that would, that would happen at that public meeting, and the last two clauses are the reporting back. So that'll be our opportunity to, to debate once we've had all this extra information added to the file. The very first clause, though, we can, this is something we can do tonight. So the first clause is to get that land use study underway. I think it's been suggested that this needs to be a priority, there is some urgency to it. Regardless of how long it takes to digest the, the interim control bylaw and its ramifications, we can ask staff to start on the land use study immediately. That is, been identified, I think everyone agrees that that's important. So that's what, that first clause, by the way, that exact wording was given to me by the city clerk to use tonight. So I would just ask a question of the commissioner, perhaps, or perhaps a legal counsel that's here, that, just do, one question, just get it out of the way. The minor variance, when there's an interim control bylaw in place, this is an extra step for residents to go to if they wish to, say, add a kitchen, which adds floor space to their home, but it's not habitation space. What exactly does that mean? What is the difference under an interim control bylaw as what we have today with no interim control bylaw? What is the difference to the homeowner?
Mr. Fleming?
Through you, Your Worship. In the regime where interim control bylaw were passed, the way it's drafted currently in the staff recommendation, any addition of additional floor space would be prohibited by the bylaw. So that is a change from status quo today without an interim control bylaw. But you are correct that a homeowner could apply to the city through a minor variance process to vary that prohibition that's contained within the minor, or within the interim control bylaw. So a normal minor variance process would be to vary a setback, the height, et cetera, within your zoning, the performance standards. Minor variances are still permitted to the actual interim control bylaw itself, so what you would apply for... So what you would apply for is a variance to the prohibition. The four tests of a minor variance would still be in place, and that is, is it minor? Does it meet the intent of the official plan? Does it meet the intent of the zoning bylaw? Is it appropriate and desirable development? And the way the Ontario Municipal Board deals with those types of variances when this has been appealed is under the characterization or consideration of minor, they look to, would the relaxation of the interim control bylaw for that application have a negative impact on the intent of the land use planning study or the intent of the interim control bylaw, and why that was put in place in the first, first place? So there are cases where the board has absolutely upheld variances to interim control bylaws, but it is very fact-specific.
Thank you. So, so it would be possible, but it would be one extra hoop, as I think the, Mr. Powers had alluded to in, in one of my questions. So just to reiterate, and I'll let you guys weigh in on this, we don't have to find all the solutions tonight, but we do have to be, take this seriously and come back later and identify some solutions. So that's, staff's going to give us some options after the public meeting if we pass this, and that'll give us the opportunity to discuss all the options and what the possible solutions are. I really, really urge you, on behalf of my residents, the residents of the other downtown districts, please take this seriously and help staff, support staff to do this work, and support council amongst ourselves, have the conversations so that we can identify some constructive solutions. The status quo is failing the residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Neal.
Thank you. I share some of the concerns that were expressed. I totally support the intent of this, of, of this direction. But frankly, as somebody who also supports the idea of, of appropriate infill for intensification and supports the idea of secondary suites as, as an attempt to make housing more affordable in our community, I'm troubled by the fact that it appears in its first blush draft today to fall short on some of those points. I will say, if this had come to a vote tonight on the draft that was put before us, my concern for the deterioration of stable neighborhoods would indeed have meant that I would have supported this, but I think we can do better. And I think that there are examples in other communities where it hasn't been as broad a swath of, of rulings, and they've been able to find ways, particularly, I would think, if it supports provincial policy, if it supports our official plan notion of, of appropriate infilling, if it supports our, our whole idea of, of finding ways to provide more affordable housing. I think that we could have an interim control bylaw that could address the main issue, which indeed is six, seven, eight, 10-bedroom additions going on to what are now more modest houses in, in the core. And frankly, the only way that that makes this, and I'll take exception with, with my friend from AMS, the only way that this has anything to do with students is if you build, if you put a six, seven, eight-bedroom addition on the market in the core of the city, no family can afford $4,000 a month in rent. If you're going to spend $4,000, you would probably want to be paying a mortgage somewhere. So, so the reality is, it's not, and I'll say this in defense of, of, I live in a very mixed neighborhood, Frontenac and Princess, and we live very comfortably and, and the, with all of our neighbors, families, students. But you know, if there's a seven-bedroom house that's being, that's being added, it's only students that, that, that is available for because of the cost, because of the nature of that. So it's not that my neighbors who contest those kinds of things are contesting them because they're, they don't like students. We have, we, I live in, in a rental house that the upstairs unit is students, and I enjoy that aspect of the neighborhood. But students deserve more appropriate housing. We need more stable neighborhoods, and for that reason, I think we need an interim control bylaw, but I think we can do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Schell.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. I'm going to try to move it more to land use planning. And my question of staff has to do with the definition of a stable neighborhood. I know for many people, they seem to think it means that a family lives in the house. My understanding is a stable neighborhood means if it's mostly single-family homes, it is considered stable if it contains single-family homes. And I would like to know how the duplexing of the single-family homes, they still remain called part of a stable neighborhood when the built form has changed so much with houses in, in the area.
Ms. Sackner.
Thank you, and through you, Your Worship. So currently, as part of our official plan, we have policies in there that speak to stable versus transitional neighborhoods that we found over time, not only through the development review process, but also through several challenges at the OMB to be problematic. And that was one of the primary areas of focus in some of the work that we've been doing as part of the five-year update. So in terms of, rather than looking at things as a stable versus transitional, what we're attempting to do through our new policy is to look at calling any type of housing district, and we have those defined in the official plan, as areas that, for considerations, are to remain stable. And that doesn't mean that there can't be a moderate amount of change that happens in them in terms of built form and some appropriate intensification, but it means that they're largely to remain housing districts as opposed to undergoing a tremendous amount of change. So that's part of the focus of, of the new policies that we've brought in through the draft official plan. That will be before council, what we're hoping to be the early part of March. But our current official plan does have some challenges with the way that it defines stable versus transitional that have been challenged, and we found that they haven't been as effective as we'd hoped they'd been when they were originally written, and that's some of the work that we're focusing on, which will carry through into the zoning as well.
Thank you very much. That's a, a good push for why we need to get the official plan update passed. And my second question has to do with something that was mentioned earlier, that our, our new official plan update is going to direct growth along corridors. But my understanding is that currently you can add to a house by right, but if you want to have growth in a corridor, you've bought a few properties and you want to put an apartment building there, you can't do that by right. You have to go through all the hoops of, of amendments, variances, zone changes, and that that's one of the things that may be holding up the whole idea of intensification along corridors. Would that be correct?
Thank you, and through you, Mayor Patterson. That would be correct for sure. In terms of the city's overall growth plan, what we have before us in terms of our official plan and what we've attempted to refine through the five-year OP process is to look at a comprehensive growth plan for the city. So it's not a one-size-fits-all, we only have growth in this area, it only looks like this. What we try to do is to achieve it through different ways throughout the city, so through modest amounts of infill within stable areas, and then to direct more intense forms of residential growth through the corridors themselves on our arterial road. So our, our OP does speak to that now. The update to the official plan does define that in greater detail, and it would be staff's intention to define that in even greater detail through the nodes and corridor study, which is, is going to dovetail out of the official plan work as well. So that is the city's overall approach. Like I said, it's not a one-size-fits-all approach, but currently, in terms of your question related to lot consolidation or the creation of larger parcel fabric by way of lot additions sometimes, if, if there isn't the existing zoning on there now to permit it, oftentimes, yes, it is going to have to go through a rezoning process, but the benefit of doing some of the detailed land use studies that we have put on our work plan is that there is the potential where we identify areas that we want to see more of this purpose-built type of housing, apartment dwellings, that we can identify areas where we, we deem that to be appropriate, and we also have the ability to potentially look at upzoning, and that's something that other communities like Guelph and Waterloo have undertaken to even give greater direction to where they want to see these more intense forms of residential growth being accommodated.
Thank you. That's what I wanted to hear. And this is why, for me, this is land use planning. Currently, it's easy. If you're a landlord, you buy a house and you double the size and fill it full of bedrooms because it's hard to put something in an area where we would like to direct growth. It's harder to do, your, the profits are probably much higher in the long run, but we can't do it because we don't have the study done, we don't have the rezoning, we don't have the decisions made. And we haven't done it. I mean, we've talked about this for years, as we all know, but we haven't actually done the study and done any of the rezoning. We now have been ordered to intensify by the province. We now need to do these studies quickly because we know that, that many of our institutions, and, and included with that, every time an institution grows, it brings in more people who want to work there, and we haven't been able to provide apartments for them, which is what many, many people would like. And that includes working people who do work in these institutions. So we do have this job to do, and I'm so glad staff has, has been really encouraging with us that, that we're going to take this study and move with it, because as it is now in this city, it is really easy to do one thing that really upsets homeowners and difficult to do the thing that probably would be better for developers and, and tradespeople when you're building a, a simple house addition that has no architect involved, it's just slap it up because we're going to fill it up and as fast as we can, to apartments that have some beauty to them, that have some thought and design, and are very attractive to bringing in the kinds of people we've been talking about. I mean, we, we really do have an opportunity to make something really exciting happen here, even though every time we bring it up, it causes some upset. And I'm very glad we're delaying so that we can address a lot of the issues that have been brought up, but I think generally we've heard from the business community, the trades community, and the, the homeowners, we've got to fix this, and it's going to take time, it's going to take more upset, but we've got to fix it. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, would you take the chair?
I will, and I recognize you.
Thank you. So I do have a couple of comments that I would like to make, but before I do that, I do have a question for staff, based on the interpretation of the, the motion as presented to us. In the last clause, it says that the above noted report include options on how to proceed to achieve the intent as outlined in new motion number two. So my first question is, would staff interpret that as also being direction to provide recommendations on those options, or is that something that we should be spelling out in the motion itself?
Oh, sorry. Commissioner Hurdle.
Thank you, and through you, Deputy Mayor. So the answer to that question from a staff perspective is yes, we would provide recommendation. This motion is quite different from the motion of January 10th, so this is something that we would include in the report.
Okay. And then my second question is, when it says to achieve the intent as outlined in new motion number two, just to clarify, are we talking about the intent to implement an interim control bylaw, or is it the intent to address the issue that's being raised here tonight?
Commissioner Hurdle.
Through you, Deputy Mayor. So the intent to address the issues that have been addressed tonight, not necessarily the interim control bylaw, when we say we would look at options, we would look at all other potential tool, policy changes that we could look at other than the interim control bylaw and bring back a recommendation to council.
Okay. Thank you. So based on those answers, I'm, I'm happy to support the motion that's been presented simply because we are moving off of the interim control bylaw to consider other options. I agree that there's an issue. Absolutely. And is it something that we need to address? Absolutely. But you have to find the right solution. And I think, as we've already heard from one of the previous delegations, the problem with an interim control bylaw is the amount of collateral damage that it causes. I mean, we've heard here tonight, and in the coming weeks, in the last couple of weeks, we've heard from residents, church groups, students, tradespeople, and even today, affordable housing agencies, all of whom would be negatively affected by an interim control bylaw. That's, that's the problem. This is a complex issue that needs a very creative nuanced solution. It may even be a, a combination of things. It may not be just one silver bullet. It may be a number of factors. The problem with an interim control bylaw is it's not designed to be nuanced. It's not designed to be creative and to thread the needle and to be able to separate the bad development from the good development. It just kills everything. So while I'm sensitive to the concerns that have been raised, we have to find a better solution. An interim control bylaw is blunt legally, and it's also blunt politically, and that's why it can cause a lot of unnecessary damage to our community if we can't find a better, more nuanced solution. So I just don't want to adopt something where the cure is worse than the disease. There is a disease, we do need to find a solution, but let's make sure we find the right solution. So I appreciate where this is coming from. I look forward to those other options, and those options may come from different places. We've already heard that the AMS is going to be hosting a symposium. I know that the mayor of another university town in Ontario is coming to speak and may be able to offer some other perspectives, and will be able to look at best practices. So I think if we do that and we do our homework, I am cautiously optimistic we can come up with something that's going to be able to address the issue while at the same time avoiding the collateral damage that we've already seen tonight. So with that, I do appreciate the mover and second or bring for this motion, and I will support it. Thank you.
Thank you. I return the chair.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Counselor Stroud, you have the last word.
Thank you, Your Worship, and thank you for your support of the motion. I would like to just point out that Counselor Neal has indicated that on the balance of factors, he still thinks the interim control bylaw could be useful. I'm going to keep an open mind on that. I believe that the collateral damage may be less than what has been stated by some of our delegations, and that's what this public meeting and briefing is, is meant to address, to get the, the real facts. I mean, without spin, let's just, let's just have a good conversation about it. I hope to see good attendance at the public meeting if this passes. I will be there myself, I'm going to be looking very, listening very carefully. There might be a little bit of a brainstorming going on with people coming with suggestions of things that we could try. Planning people, you know, professors from even other universities could weigh in on this. So, you know, let's, as a community, let's, let's move together. I think I'm sensing around the horseshoe that there's a, a will, there's a consensus to work together on this, and I, I really appreciate that. And, and thank you for all of your input over the last few days as I came up with the wording here, and also thank you to staff for helping me today, right up to 7:30 with the printing of the, of the added motion. So thank you for your support, Your Worship, and I, and I'm looking forward to the next steps.
Thank you. So with that, we will call the vote on new motion number two. And that carries. Okay, so moving back to where we left off on the agenda, next I will ask for report number 18 from the CAO.
Moved by Counselor Hutchison, seconded by Counselor McLaren, that report number 18 from the Chief Administrative Officer consent be received and adopted.
Okay, so there are four clauses. Okay, so there are four clauses. The fourth clause is in the addits. Would anyone like any of the items separated? Yes. So Deputy Mayor Holland, item B, is it, item B has been separated for your bicentennial just, is that correct?
No, I'm looking at item C.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, that's under the next one. Sorry. Yes.
So separate item C, please.
C. Okay, so first we will vote on the balance. So clause A is the 2017 municipal bore wing bylaw. Clause B, 2017 interim tax levy. Clause D, consent to assignment of contract for winter control for specified municipal buildings and facilities. So we will call the vote. And that carries. Clause C, multi-year capital program adjustments. Deputy Mayor Holland.
Thank you, Your Worship. So after, or when I first reviewed this, I was disappointed to see that the number of streets in the Kings Court area that would be negatively impacted by this adjustment. And while I appreciate the developments and the potential economic development and job creation that will come from creation of the projects that are mentioned that will take place rather than the projects that have been scheduled, it's, I have heard a lot from residents in the area about the condition of the streets that are indicated, Kings Court especially, Kings Court Avenue. And so I had the opportunity today to speak with staff who have assured me that the priority for these streets will remain high and that they will be dealt with in the initial stages of the next phase. And thankfully, that coincides with the development of the new high school at QECBI, at the former QECBI location. So there will be an opportunity for residents to have, to make suggestions or provide input on the development of the area, which I think will be a benefit and will hopefully coincide. The construction of the school will be ending as this construction project on the roads is undertaken, so that the room for partnership exists. So I'm feeling a lot more reassured now based on those conversations. I just wanted to address the issue because I do think it's unfortunate that projects that had been scheduled, that people had been anticipating and would improve their lives and their transportation network, that they will be delayed. But I will be supporting the recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Hutchison.
Thank you, Your Worship. My concerns are much the same. I can't say I'm against the recommendation in this sense that it's about the utilization of senior government money, clean water and so on, and also economic development, which was probably a couple of years in the making, and now we have to do the infrastructure work to make it possible. So of course, I'm supportive of both those things. However, this is, the areas that are not getting serviced by doing this, and we'll have to wait, as I understand, four years. So that's my question. I don't know if anyone's here that can answer that question.
Mr. Keach.
Through you, Your Worship. The, I think the way to look at the projects that are not taking place over the next two years is that they are being delayed, they're not being removed. They would be included in the next multi-year capital plan that would come forward to the next council. The fact that they are on the current list and being deferred, my guess is they would be at the top of the list or near the top of the list that would be proposed for the next plan, the next council. So I can't definitively say the year, but it's probably more likely to be a two-year delay as opposed to a four-year delay.
Okay, so that's good news, because I was thinking at the end of the four-year construction period, which make it 2021, but you're saying it could be 2019?
Through you, Your Worship, again, I can't, as I say, I can't definitively say because other priorities may come forward, but these streets obviously were a priority. That's why they're on the list. I think the report is fairly self-explanatory as to why they're being moved, and I would see them as a top priority in putting together the list for the next time, so I can't definitely say they would be at the top. But I would look at it more that it's probably at the start of the next four-year plan, which would be two years from now, as opposed to at the end of the next four-year plan, which is, I guess, could be four to six years from now.
Thank you for that. I just wanted to say that one of the impetuses for speaking to this is that these are particularly in the area of Russell Kent Thomas, these are middle-income, modest main income to, with some areas with some serious poverty. They're not over-serviced areas by any stretch of the imagination. As we all know, we have a regrettable past of North End versus South End, you know, above Princess Street, below Princess Street, history in Kingston, which we've gone some way to trying to address by a number of means. Development in the Rita Heights, the hub there, the new high school, the possibility of other developments, improvements to roads and sewers and water and so on, all of which we should be proud of, and all of which is good. But we still need to work to show that we're treating all our citizens in an equitable way. So like Counsel Holland has said, I'm heartened by, I can see why we're deferring this. I don't know if it was the only deferral that could be made, but I sort of trust staff that they made the right decision. And I just want to give the idea a push that we don't, we need not to forget this, and we need to follow through and further make this a cohesive, equitable city. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Stroud.
Thank you, Your Worship. Mr. Keach, if you may, might indulge me in another question. I see in the report, the Centennial Drive extension mentions road rehabilitation and new multi-use pathways to enable active transportation uses. Could you elaborate on that sentence, especially the active transportation uses, and what these new pathways might look like?
Mr. Keach.
Through you, Your Worship. Unfortunately, I don't think I can comment on exactly what they're going to look like, but I would say with any new roads, construction project, and I believe we talked a bit about this when we presented the four-year plan, we don't just look at creating a right-of-way for cars, trucks, vehicles. We also look very carefully at ways for people to walk, ways for people to ride bicycles, that type of thing. So when we look at roads, whether it be the downtown area, you know, below Princess Street, north of Princess Street, industrial areas, that's one of the things that we take into account and try to factor that in. If there are some specific questions in this, I'd be happy sort of offline for myself and Mr. Van Beuren to address this with the council.
Thank you, Commissioner. It was just, it occurred to me because Centennial Drive and the Faye Plant location, so in close proximity to the KMP Trail section there, parallel to the 401, that with an active transportation, you could create a bit of a network if you hooked up the active transportation pathways with the KMP Trail. I just wanted to mention that.
All right. Through you, Your Worship. The network comment, I think, is an excellent comment, and those are the types of things that we try to look at in the trail and the area. I think will fit very nicely with this.
Counsel Neil.
Yes, thank you very much. I'm going to, I know that former Counselor Allen had concerns about, and had a desire for the installation of traffic signalization on Unity Road and Highway 38. So in the absence of a countryside counselor, I'm wondering if you can make the same general commitment as I just heard for the other streets? And if you would be able to, would it be a cost that I would think that would be more modest than those others? And is it something that we could achieve through working reserve if there was? What kind of cost are we looking at for signalization at that intersection?
Mr. Keach.
Through you, Your Worship. Unfortunately, I don't have the exact cost of each project being deferred. A couple of comments that I would make. So every item on this list that's being deferred, I would see as being a priority for the next capital budget, so that this one as well as the streets that we were asked about before. There are some things that we are doing, since we're not doing this signalization. We've reduced the speed limits. I believe there are, there's some signs installed or will be installed, the signs that indicate your speed, and if you're above the speed limit, they flash very brightly to indicate that. We are looking at, I guess you could call them oversized stop signs on the road coming up to Highway 38 with flashing lights. So there are a number of interim things that we're putting in place. So that's the answer to one question. It will be included as a priority next budget. As far as available funds from the working capital reserve to fund this, as we mentioned in the report, there's really two items for the deferral of all the projects. We try to stay within our envelope that was approved at budget time, so there's a financial concern. There's also a workload concern because the projects that we are taking on, which are somewhat expanded projects from initially looked at, are very significant projects, and I think we would have a difficulty fitting them in. And so our recommendation, as noted in the report, is that they be deferred and picked up early in the next plan, two years from now.
If you could look at up the price, what the actual cost of what we're deferring, and if you could share that with council, that would be great.
Yeah, through you, Your Worship. Then I will, I'll talk with the engineering group and what we will do in one of the Friday updates. We will include some detail in that regards.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will call the vote on clause C. And that carries. Moving on, report number 19 from the CAO.
Moved by Counselor Cannon, seconded by Counselor Neil, that report number 19 from the Chief Administrative Officer recommend be received and adopted clause by clause.
Okay, so the first clause is the Boys and Girls Club purchase of services and community hub at West End Facility. Counsel Cannon.
Thank you, and through you. I just want to commend staff for this report. I think it's excellent in communicating with the Boys and Girls Club. They seem very happy. I know that we've made a priority to have a smart, livable city, and a big part of that is community hubs. The Boys and Girls Club had some extra space, and they have some needs and wants, and we were able to piggyback some of that, some space, and provide aquatic programs, health and social services, fitness programs, and programs through the seniors association. So this is one of those unique situations where it's definitely a win-win, and we're allowing the Boys and Girls Club to have, continue to have a strong presence in the community, but also give some good programming to our constituents as well. And I think this is one of those good stories that we have coming out of council. I feel like sometimes we don't get all the credit with some of the good things that does come out of this room, and this is one of them, so I'm happy to support this.
Thank you. Counsel Neil.
Just very quickly, I fully support it as well and appreciate this initiative, and I also applaud the kind of intergenerational aspect of this. We have, now have a very successful daycare at Rita Crest, and now we'll have seniors programming in the Boys and Girls Club. And it's great that we're able to use, to encourage that kind of intergenerational aspect to our facilities and to our supported facilities. So I applaud that.
Thank you. So we will call the vote on clause one. And that carries. Number two, City of Kingston and Queen's University Strategic Partnership. Counsel Shell.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Something that came to mind as we were having our very long discussion about housing, I would be interested if you could also discuss live-work opportunities. When the report talks about attracting and retaining and very much talking about entrepreneurs and young people who we want to attract in Kingston, it's entirely possible that they would like a live-work hub, you know? So it would be great if that was included as just part of your discussions where there might be opportunities to do that sort of thing. Thanks.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Holland is not here. Counsel, Counsel Bohm? Counsel Bohm? Sorry, it's the previous deputy mayor. Can you take the chair?
Yes, Your Worship, and I recognize you.
Thank you. I was just inspired by something that Counsel Shell raised as well. I think it's, I think it's important to emphasize that I think that this is, this is a great strategic partnership because of how it benefits both the city and the university, and to use that as an example. I know that universities in general are moving to a more applied model where they want to be able to offer students more experiential learning, whether that's internships, or co-ops, or summer work programs. So I know that Queen's is moving in that direction, but that's exactly where we're moving as a city, is wanting to retain students and provide more employment opportunities within local businesses. So if ever there was a definition of a win-win, clearly this is it. And I feel like all the town gown relations work has basically brought us to this point where we can actually make a lot of progress in the coming years. So that's just one example I think is going to be very beneficial for us, so I hope that everyone is able to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Worship, and I return the chair.
Thank you. Counsel Neil.
Just very quickly, I know that there was a passing comment and a recognition rightfully of St. Lawrence College and RMC also within our community. I look forward, I totally support this initiative, but I also look forward to the opportunity for there to be synergies and working collaboratively between the city and all of our post-secondary institutions.
Thank you. So we will call the vote on clause two. And that carries. Okay. Report number 20 from the CAO.
Moved by Counselor O'Sanick, seconded by Counselor Stroud, that report number 20 from the Chief Administrative Officer, consider be received.
Okay, so there's just the one item, options to fill the vacant counselor's seat for Countryside District. It's a consider report, so I'll look for a motion from council to move one of the three options. I did see Counsel Bohm's hand first, so what we'll do is we'll give him the first chance to move an option, and then we'll take it from there. So Counsel Bohm.
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you. I'd like to move option three onto the floor.
Okay, so there's a motion by Counsel Bohm to move option number three. Is there a seconder? Seconded by Counsel Neil. Okay, thank you. Counsel Bohm, you have the floor.
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you. I know there's been a lot of debate and a lot of correspondence on this, and we've all heard from numerous community members of the pros and cons and pitfalls, and we've also got some costing now in front of us. And to bring some attention to it, it says up to $150,000, so that's essentially an up-to-budget. So we know there's an upper limit as well. And as one of the only other kind of quasi-rural counselors out there, I know that I'm not even comfortable, and I have a rural area still in my district appointing somebody. And part of the reason for that is essentially that the optics of that is you'd have a bunch of urban counselors appointing a rural resident without kind of knowing sort of the background there. So I know that there's a cost to this. I also think that democracy isn't free. I also think that democracy isn't free. So with that being said, I really think that, you know, council, with all the correspondence that we have, should move forward on this. And as was mentioned earlier, you know, there's going to be a cost, but at the same time, this is the most democratic process. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Neal?
Yes, I'm very happy to support this. I know we've had a very kind of split response, but I have to say, in kind of going over my email trail on this subject, the majority of people from that district have been asking for a by-election, and for a variety of reasons. First of all, I have to say, elections are democratic, appointments are political. And so I think unless you're down to such a narrow period of time, an appointment is never as good as a by-election. There was, and I've got a chart I'll share with people later on, in Hamilton, Ward Three, in about this same time in 2014, did a report on how much it would cost to have a by-election. Now, they were in, that was virtually months before their election. They have full-time counselors, so the election was already going on virtually, and people were already registered for the general election. And to their, to their benefit, a very popular former mayor stepped forward and said, "I'd be willing to do the job without intending to run in October." And so there was an appointment made. But that's a very, very different circumstance than we have when we're virtually a year and a half away from our next general election. And there was an email, and I took a little bit of exception to it, but I could see the rationale. And the email said, "Why should, why should 11 urban counselors decide who's going to represent the rural district? Let us have a vote." And so I think a by-election makes perfect sense. I do have an amendment that I was going to propose if I could, and it's duly moved and seconded, and the clerks have it. If they could put it up, and I'll explain the rationale for the amendment.
Okay, so we'll just pause until we can see the amendment, please. Okay, so moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Counselor Holland, that option three of clause one, report number 20, be amended to change the budget from $150,000 to $75,000, and that an additional clause be added that reads that a public and detailed accounting report of all expenses be reported to council no later than Q3 2017. Okay, so duly moved and seconded. Counselor Neal, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. And I understand the clock is now running again. Thank you. Could, could I ask, I also shared a document with, with staff as well. I was very happy, one of the benefits of represent, we don't have executive or research assistants, but we live in a community where we have very good researchers as constituents. And there was an initial information that we saw today that was presented that showed what the last, I believe, nine by-elections municipally cost taxpayers in other communities. And it really kind of gave me pause as to what, what we were being proposed to cost. As, if you can scroll down to the Kingston one, which is five, $150,000 for 6,999 voters works out to be over $21 per registered voter. As you can see, there is no other community that came anywhere near spending that much per registered voter. Whippey, which wasn't on the list we saw earlier, had budget, asked for council to budget $100,000. Their actual was actually $65,000. They had just over 18,000 voters, so their actual cost was $3.59. Now, I am going to ask staff what are included in those $150,000, but I do want to point out that Whippey actually had an online voting system that operated for eight days. And they didn't have polling stations. What they had were four election centers for those eight days. And so if, if my darling mother, who never did quite figure out how a computer worked, wanted to vote, all she had to do during those eight days was to go to one of those stations, show that she could be registered, and she would be assisted in how to vote. So, so there are systems that work. Pickering approved $100,000. Their actual was actually $35,000. Now, they had a very low turnout, just over 20%, I think, and it was paper ballot only. It was old school. But their actual was $1.53 a vote. I'd like to ask staff now, what value added would we be getting by spending, by budgeting $150,000?
Mr. Clerk?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, we welcome the opportunity to justify the $150,000. So what I'll do is I'll present the information in a micro fashion so that we can go right down to pretty much the last cent. So in terms of the $150,000, advertising is estimated at $8,000. Laptops are estimated at $27,000. That's 18 laptops at $1,500 each. That's one per DRO, one for the revision clerk, and one for the uploading of the information at the end of the night. With respect to our vendor dealing with the electronic and internet voting there, in our contract with them, the cost, in addition to having data fix and voter view, is $77,950. So just with that cost alone, you wouldn't have any advertising, there would be no laptops, there would be no supplies, no rental of facilities, no uploading of the results, and no staff to man the polls. But I'll walk you through some of the information dealing with Dominion Equipment, including the data fix and voter view. Vote tabulators amount to $9,600. The EMS software amounts to $3,700. Beyond Voter Services is $950. The Voter View Express is $1,100. The ballots that are being printed, and we estimate it's 7,000 eligible electors, is $1,540. The internet voting, once again, with the 7,000 eligible electors, is $10,150. The implementation services is $7,800. The logic and accuracy testing is $1,600. The election day support is $1,600. The shipping of the equipment and ballots is $700. The training costs are $1,300. The cardboard ballot box is $500. The notification cards are $2,800. The postage for the notification cards are $5,320. The setup charges for the letters is $500. The accessible equipment is $3,200. The assistive listening device is $2,000. The accessible equipment is $3,200. The ballot marking pens are $480. The memory card plastic ties, $20. Secrecy folders, $540. The accessible audio ballot license is $3,000. The enhanced results display is $2,300. The voter list management services is $16,500. The voter view activation setup fee is $750. Supplies, miscellaneous supplies, will be $2,000. The facility rentals is $1,000. The remote upload of the results, and that includes the external cell modems, the servers, the SIM cards, and the services, is $22,360. The staffing at the advanced polls is $4,800. The staffing on voting day is $7,200. So if you take a look at that and add those numbers together, you come to $150,310. Now, this estimate is in keeping with how the election was run in 2014, which is a requirement of the Act. So what we're doing is no different than what we have done if this had been a regular election date. So for us, you know, we're cognizant of what some of the costs are. We haven't done the research to what other municipalities do. To be quite frank, it doesn't matter to me. I'm running the election in Kingston, not in Hamilton. So in order to ensure the integrity of the election, ensuring that's maintained throughout the by-election, that the secrecy and confidentiality of each vote is maintained, and that the by-election is fair and unbiased, that the by-election is accessible to all electors, and there is certainty that the results reflect the votes cast, and that the electors and candidates are treated fairly consistently, I would submit that up to $150,000 is the number that's going to be required in order to meet those goals. Thank you.
Counselor Neal?
I still say that given what other municipalities have successfully budgeted, and they run, have run these by-elections at a fraction of what we're asking our taxpayers to pay for, for elections here. We're being told, and we've all received those emails, and I'm the last person that applauds the Fraser Institute when they come up with studies, but we're being told that the City of Kingston has, has the second highest, I believe. And I see the mayor shaking his head. I would love for the mayor and the CAO to debunk that, that report that recommends that we have much too high. And maybe offline, you can tell me what's wrong with that study. But I will, I will say that if this was a difference of 30,000 or 40,000...
Thirty seconds, Counselor Neal.
If this was a difference of 30,000 or 40,000, I could see the rationale, but it isn't. What, what we need, and what the taxpayers need, I believe, is a good, efficient, democratic elec, by-election. We need a Chevy, not a Cadillac with all of the trimmings. And for that reason, I strongly suggest that on behalf of our taxpayers, our constituents, we support this motion.
Thank you. Next on my list is Deputy Mayor Holland.
Thank you, your worship. My apologies, I wanted to be on the speaker's list for the main motion, not the amendment. Sorry.
Okay, thank you. So on the amendment only, next on my list is Counselor George, and then I'll have Counselor Hutchison and Counselor O'Sanick.
Thank you, your worship, and through you. I totally agree with the clerk. We are running this election under what the current, because I don't think they've changed much, what the current Elections Act says we must do. So what the other, what the other municipalities, how they held theirs, we don't know. Maybe they didn't allow all the opportunity for the voters to access their ability to vote like we are. I don't know what that answer is. When I hear the comment that this is the taxpayers' money, what we're looking at is taking this from the working fund reserve. And as we know, the working fund reserve is taxpayers' money. I'm not saying it's not, Counselor, but it's money that has been put back, it's already been collected, it's been put back by staff because they've been able to save on, on some of the projects that we as a council over the years have approved at budget time. We haven't had to allocate all of the funds to those projects. That money gets put in the working fund reserve with the idea that it could be used for one-time spending for some of those, and this would be, I would feel fits into that category, one of those rare times when unforeseen expenditures pop up. And so the working fund reserve was there so that we could allocate some of those monies for that purpose. And that's exactly what this is. This isn't something that we could have pre-budgeted for. And, I mean, I don't want to get into micromanaging, and that's what tends to happen at times. We have a report from our clerk, while we haven't actually had a physical report, but we've had a statement from our clerk outlining what the costs are to this municipality to run a by-election. If we go with this motion and cut that amount in half, then we're not running a by-election. We might just as well forget talking about it anymore tonight and go with one of the other options, because we can't do it for $75,000. We're hearing that from our clerk. So I would argue that we need to shoot this down and listen to our staff and not get into the kitchen too far and micromanage. We do things a certain way in Kingston, right or wrong. We're doing it right, according to our clerk, and I support that. I'm not going to get in, because I don't understand the Elections Act, I'm not going to get into discussing whether it's right, wrong, or otherwise. He's the man that we hired to be in the know when it comes to that, and he's telling us that this is how you run the election, how you do it properly. So I'm going to support that, and I would urge council to vote down the recommendation or the amendment.
Thank you. Counselor Hutchison?
Thank you, your worship. I have one detail that has nothing to do with where I'm coming from, but I did want to know again what the 77.9,000 was for. Did I hear that correct? It's over half of the cost, and I just, I just didn't get a chance to write it down.
Mr. Clerk?
Through you, your worship. That's dealing with our vendor, including data fix and voter view. I can go through the 20 different items that are on there, once again, if you would like.
If you could summarize it in one sentence, that would be great.
It'd be with 20 points in the one sentence. You're basically talking about the tabulators, the software, the ballots, the voter list management service, ensuring that the polls are accessible, the voter notification cards, the stamps for the voter notification cards, the election day support, the logic and accuracy testing, and so on. And those are all numbers that come right out of the agreement that we have with the vendor, so it's not like we're making these numbers up as we go along.
So is there, is there a chance that we're actually getting, stealing a march on the next election, like we're getting something additional out of this, rather than just a single by-election?
Mr. Clerk?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, you are correct. Some of the things that they're setting up for us will be things that we'll be able to utilize in 18, but you can't get that in 18 if you're not getting it for now. So the agreement is if they do something for us now that we can use in 18, we're not going to pay that same cost again.
Right. Okay. So I guess my thinking is that we don't know, well, we kind of do know that $75,000 probably doesn't do it. We don't, I admit that the numbers looked up are, you know, suggestive, but we don't know exactly what they did. And it seemed to me that most of the people speaking on the issue of whether we should have a by-election or not were not talking about money. They were talking about governance and philosophy, and they thought that was the route we should take because it was the cleanest option. I think the mayor summarized it quite well in the newspaper, or sometimes they clean up one's quotes, but it was good. So I don't think that's the issue here. I think the issue is not the number. I know that it was mentioned a number of times, and I understand why there's an impetus by Counselor Neal to look at this carefully, and I respect what the, the research done here. If we were going to turn it down because of money, I'd say let's spend a lot of time on it. But we're not. And we know we're going to get something, this is not just a election, we're going to get something out of this that's going to be good for 2018. That's what the clerk just said, that you can disagree with me, but I think I heard him correctly. So, and that's fine by me. I mean, presuming the number in 18 will be less. So I'm, I'm thinking that some, are we doing just the first clause, or are we doing both clauses?
So it's one amendment, but you can ask that they be set... So it's one amendment, but you can ask that they be separated if you want.
Well, I'll ask to have them separated, and perhaps other councils would disagree with me, but the idea is, if the issue's being brought up, I know the clerk's going to do this probably anyway, he just has to report it out. And so I'm fine with the second part, because I think it's business as usual. I'm not fine with the first part, because, and here's my central reason, we want to make sure that we can say this was a democratic election done to the best of our ability. Otherwise, there'll be all kinds of questions, and one of the big reasons for doing this is because we can say that person, whoever they are, represents countryside, and we didn't interfere with that. Right? That's what we want to do. So let's not go cheap here, okay? Whether we're right or wrong about that doesn't really matter. Let's spend a hundred, you know, let's spend the money, do it right, and then we don't have to answer any of those embarrassing questions. So I will not vote for that first part of the, on the money, because I think it's counterproductive. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Ossana?
Thank you, Your Worship. That's what I was going to ask, is that those two clauses be separated. I have no problem supporting getting a report back at the end, because then we'll know exactly how much it costs. And thanks very much, Mr. Clerk, for giving that thorough estimated cost. And so then we'll know how much it actually costs, goes on the record, we'll know for this time forward if another municipality is looking at by-election costs, we'll have it on the record, this is how much our by-election costs. But for the first clause, I can't support it. I understand the intent, but the way we have our original clause, it says up to, so maybe it will cost only eighty-five thousand. We don't know how much it's going to cost. You know, countryside is very large, and if it only costs eighty-five thousand, I don't want to shortchange our largest geographic district. So I won't be supporting the first clause. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Bohm?
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you. As I stated earlier, you know, we obviously know democracy's not free. I think that the second clause makes sense. I think we're going to get that information anyways, it's going to be available. The first clause, I actually am very frustrated with. I'm not going to be supporting the amendment, and I think it actually comes dangerously close to questioning, you know, staff and their ability to do their jobs, and I don't want to encourage that at all. And the reason is, is because to throw seventy-five thousand out there as a number without understanding the costs that were proposed, it's simply just a shooting into the wind. It doesn't make really any sense. I understand there's a cost, there's a problem, or an issue, seeing the overall cost is part of the problem, but I don't think that's the problem. I think the problem here is we need to look at countryside and realize that this is a chance to highlight the rural part of the city and the rural issues, and to actually give that the highlight that it wouldn't probably normally get in a general election. So yes, there's a little bit of a cost to it. Part of that, though, is benefits that are going to be basically brought to the forefront in the next general election with some cost savings there, if we hear the clerk correctly. And essentially, for those reasons, I will not be supporting this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Holland?
Thank you, Your Worship. I guess to the first point that was just brought up by Counselor Bohm regarding the costs, so he questions whether or not we understand, or the question is, do we understand the costs? And I would respond to that, that no, we don't understand the costs, that we don't have the costs in front of us, the itemized costs. We heard a list of costs. We know that, what do we know about the costs? We know that a vendor is getting approximately half of the hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Do we know that this is the only vendor, that this is the best vendor? We don't know that. Do we know how much money we will save in the two thousand and eighteen election by using this vendor? We don't have that information either. And in terms of Counselor Hutchinson's argument regarding the fact that the emails suggested that residents were not overly concerned with costs, that that wasn't the overwhelming concern, that of course we all received emails that were, from residents who were concerned with costs, and I actually took note of where residents came from and who was writing, obviously wanting to know more about what residents of countryside had to say about this issue than anyone else. And I would say that the people who were most concerned with the cost of the by-election were the residents of countryside. And I think we understand the logic in that, when we look at our city and understand that the rural areas of the city have traditionally felt that they were not receiving the same services for their tax dollars that other residents of the city have received, so therefore are quite concerned with costs. So we, as counselors, are the ones who are going to be held responsible for this amount, which will be reported in the media, and there will be a great deal of consternation if we have the opportunity to look at ways of producing the same result for less money, which this amendment is proposing that we do. So for that reason, I support it.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, will you take the chair?
I take the chair, and I recognize you.
Thank you. Okay, just to note that the dollar figure has been reported in the media, and that is the major drawback to the by-election. And I think that that's what we're trying to grapple with here. I think that it's important to take note of something that the clerk did tell us in his answer, and that is that we are mandated, when we hold a by-election, to hold it to the same standard by which we conduct the regular municipal election. So for those of you that weren't here with the debate leading up to the last municipal election, we talked about making extra investment into our election by providing internet voting and telephone voting, and being able to go voting in person, many different options. We approved additional expenses towards our municipal election so that we could increase voter turnout. So it's not surprising to me that the cost of a by-election that would be held to that same standard will be more expensive, because it's the same standard. We want to offer a menu of choices about how to vote, we want to increase voter turnout, we want to advertise, we want to let people know where to vote. All of these things are important to adding to the legitimacy of the by-election result, which is exactly what Counselor Hutchinson said, and I couldn't agree more with that. The fact is that if we are going to support the by-election option for the reason that it is legitimate, it's the best way to legitimize the next counselor that's going to sit around this table, if we nickel and dime this now, we undercut that very argument. And I know Counselor Hutchinson did an excellent job of stating that, but I would just like to wholeheartedly support his argument. So I do appreciate, though, this discussion, and I will say this, that this is a legitimate discussion. This is not an attack on staff. This is our job as council, is to question and to deliberate with items that are before us. So in no way have I thought that anything that has been said here has been out of line, but I think we need to weigh out why it is that the cost is higher, and that's because we're simply offering a better service in terms of the by-election. So for that reason, I'm happy to support. Thank you.
Thank you. I return the chair.
Thank you. Anybody else on the amendment? Okay, before we do that, it is ten forty-three, so I'm going to ask for a motion to extend the meeting at this point. Counselor Neal to finish the agenda? Okay, so we have a motion moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Counselor Hutchinson, to extend the meeting to finish the agenda. And that carries. Okay, next on my list is Counselor Turner.
Yes, and thank you, Mayor Patterson. My thoughts on this is we need to vote for option three, but I don't think we should, as everyone has said here this evening, nickel and dime our election. I don't want a half-price election. I don't think that's necessary, and I don't think we can just grab a figure out of the sky and say it's seventy-five thousand. I think staff has done a good job, they've taken time to research this. I think we have to trust their decision and stay out of the kitchen, as other council members have said. So in this case, I am not going to vote for the option three, clause one. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak to the amendment only? Counselor Struck?
Thank you, Your Worship. First of all, I support Counselor Neal's right to suggest that we can do this for less money, based on research that was painstakingly done by a constituent who presented tonight, who suggests that other municipalities are doing it for much cheaper. However, in that research, it doesn't say the method, it doesn't say what standards were used, there's missing information there. I've heard the clerk's response, and I believe, I believe the clerk is giving us the straight dope, the straight answer, that's how much it costs, a hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and something dollars. Yes, part of that cost is for this vendor, perhaps they're not the cheapest option, that wasn't asked for. I agree with what the mayor said and what Counselor Hutchinson said. Essentially, I'm torn. I'm torn because really, I was leaning towards opposing the amendment until Counselor Holland spoke, and then I realized that the only thing that's going to be remembered out of this whole debate isn't the arguments everyone made, but what price we end up agreeing on. And I guess, I guess I have to say that I'm going to support the amendment, because I believe that although we need the most voter turnout possible under the circumstances, we maybe haven't explored all the options on cost savings, and that has been identified by countryside residents primarily as a huge concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Shell?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. I wasn't going to speak, but I am, because the reason I asked Mr. Grenville, was there a template? There wasn't. It was just an amount on the websites. Our council has a chance to get a public report, a public detailed accounting report of all expenses, so that when this happens in some other city, they'll be able to say, that's what Kingston does, that's where the expense comes from. And I certainly will support the budget amount of a hundred and fifty thousand, we've been given a very detailed report. The information that was given to us by a citizen has no detail whatsoever compared to what we've received. So I will certainly support the, I will not be supporting the first part of the motion, but I will be supporting the second part, saying that a public and detailed accounting report has a benefit to other municipalities, seeing how we do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? Counselor Neal, you have last word.
Thank you very much. I guess I'm troubled by the fact that a counselor earlier said, it's not our job to question staff. That's exactly our job. We're elected to represent the taxpayers of this city, and if something comes in, in this case, four or five times a higher cost than the last nine provincial by-elections, then we should ask why? Why? And I'm happy to share, I have the reports from Pickering, Brock, Whipby, I'm happy to share those detailed reports, and they're just as informative as probably more so. And I want to point out that it's not a case of not having electronic voting. Whipby, with eighteen thousand registered voters, so that's almost, well, two and a half times the number of voters as countryside, spent sixty-five thousand dollars, and they had online voting for eight days, and they had four voting stations, which is one more than we're proposing for countryside. We can, I'm sure, ensure a very, very accessible voting system for this by-election, and we don't have to spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And it's clear that it probably isn't going to, the amendment isn't going to pass, but the reality is, we're responsible to our taxpayers. And I can't understand why we would just accept the fact that somehow, in countryside, with less, with only seven thousand voters, we should be spending four times as much as other municipalities. And they abide by the Elections Act, they abide by making sure that they give full democratic rights and full accessibility in their by-elections. So I think it's really, really unfortunate that we can't, at the very least, and at seventy-five thousand dollars, we would still be paying twice as much as those other municipalities paid on a per-voter basis. So I'm very troubled by this decision, but I hope the electorate remembers this. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will call the vote on the motion to amend. So we're going to split it into two parts. So first, we'll take the vote on the first part of the amendment. So this is on the first paragraph, please vote. And that loses by a vote of three to nine. On the second paragraph? And that carries. Okay, on the motion as amended, Counselor Neal, you have two minutes and ten seconds on the clock on the main motion.
I will indeed still support this, because I think it's our only truly democratic option. It's very, I know democracy is expensive, and democracy in this case is far too expensive, but it's better, it's better than the appointment options, so I will indeed support this.
Thank you. Next on my list is Deputy Mayor Holland.
Thank you, Your Worship. Just a question. So in regards to the timeline, I don't know if I have it here, but the question, so for an appointment, an option two, the advertising period was ten days, ten days' notice given to the, in the newspaper for applications to be submitted. For the nomination period, it's six weeks, and I'd just like to know if there's a distinction and what that is, why there's such a difference between the amount of time suggested for vote.
Mr. Clerk?
To Mr. Mayor, option two was a very constricted timeframe, and that's why we had to restrict the timeline, because we had to make the decision by the end of February.
Okay, thanks. Maybe just a bit more information then on the nomination process and what steps are involved in that six-week process, would be there?
We'll be putting out the request for the nomination forms, and once they're received, the nomination day will come into play, and then at that point, we'll be ready to move forward with the election.
Okay, thanks. Is there, so, sorry, finally, is there anything legislated regarding the dates for the nomination period, or is this a matter of processing?
It is mandated within the Municipal Elections Act, and it's all predicated on when nomination day is, and the dates move forward or the dates move backwards based on that particular day.
Okay, thanks. So I will be supporting this option, I'm delighted to know that this is the option that we ended up on, it's all I ever wanted out of this, and so, thanks.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, will you take the chair?
Take the chair, and I recognize you.
So I think I've, everyone knows that publicly, I agree. I've said that I think this is the best option. I'll be honest with you, initially, I balked, not only at the cost, but also the timeline that's associated. that's associated with the by-election, because this is going, this is the longest process. But as has already been stated, this is the fairest, most transparent way to go, to establish a new councillor, that nobody can question the mandate for them to represent countryside district. And to be honest, I look forward to the campaign. I think it will be interesting to see how the campaign unfolds, and how candidates that want to put their name forward will be able to speak out on key city decisions that we're going to have to make as council over the next year and a half. I think there are several big decisions that are upcoming. And also to be able to talk about rural issues, and I know we hear about this often, that rural issues don't often get the play that they should, certainly among, around this table, and among some of the urban councillors, and I'm a former urban councillor myself. So, so I think it will be good for the rural area. I think it's an investment in the rural area to ensure that their voice is heard around this table. So, so appreciate what I think will be support for this, and so hopefully, we can support this unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, I return the chair.
Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Councillor Hutchinson?
I just want to say that I appreciate all the emails that people send down, especially from countryside, but from other citizens as well, that originally, I thought appointment was the best route, but the more I thought about it, the more messy it got, and the less fair, it seemed, or possibly even accurate, as to the voting desires of the people who live in countryside. So I think, like I said before, and the mayor said, and a couple others have said, that it's the cleanest way, it's also the biggest opportunity for countryside, I think it's a good point that councillor Bohm made, and the mayor made. Am I happy about the cost? Nope. Number of people, as I said previously, did bring that up, some people didn't mention it at all. I won't guess as to, you know, what percentage it was, whatever, but I think this is the most democratic way to go, and from that point of view, it's the best way to go. No one said democracy was going to be cheap, at least good democracy, that you can demonstrate you ran a proper election, and like I said before, that's what we have to try and do here. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will call the vote then on the clause as amended. And that carries. Report number twenty-one from Planning Committee.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson, it's my pleasure to present report number twenty-one from the Planning Committee for council's consideration.
Moved by councillor Shell, seconded by councillor Neil, that report number twenty-one from the Planning Committee be received and adopted.
Okay, so, there are four clauses. Clause two and four have been separated for councillor George. Councillor George has stepped away. Okay, so I guess, would anyone like any further separations? Councillor Neil?
I wish to speak to two and three, please.
Okay, so first, we'll take the vote on one and four. So number one is approval of an application for zoning bylaw amendment, two oh two Splinter Court, and number four, approval and application for zoning bylaw amendment thirty-nine Churchill Street. And that carries. Number two, approval of an application for zoning bylaw amendment six eighty-two Princess Street. Councillor Neil?
Yes, I voted against this in planning for a couple of reasons. It does have a six-bedroom, I believe six or seven-bedroom apartment included in it. That was how they got around initially their amenity space requirement, they came forward to request further amenity space forgiveness. They had a building permit with the required amount of amenity space, but they built a peaked roof, and so they were forced to come back and have a public meeting and request a zoning change, because they already built outside of the approved planning envelope. I, I think that that is really unfortunate, and I also had some concerns, as did at least one general contractor and one former, former building inspector, chief building inspector from a nearby community, and I have shared those concerns, and I know that our building inspectors are reviewing that accordingly. So, that's my rationale, that's why I'll be voting against this again. It's creating far too many bedrooms, and seeking and receiving forgiveness for amenity space, and not having adequate parking, because we don't count bedrooms, we count units, which is unfortunate. But, for those reasons, and the reasons that it, they built outside of their approved envelope, then came back for forgiveness, I am again going to vote against this.
Thank you. Councillor Stroud?
Very briefly, from what councillor Neil just said, and because he is the district councillor that contains this development, I will also be voting against it.
Thank you. We will call the vote then on clause two. And that carries by a vote of seven to three. Number three, approval of an application for official plan and zoning bylaw amendment five fifty-six Princess Street. Councillor Neil?
Yes, again, I voted against this at planning, and this is the reason. If you go by that property, and I know another councillor has concerns about this as well, it's a very, very narrow, counted in inches, you would have to walk sideways to go down the alley that separates these two buildings. And what's being proposed is a solid wall extension of that building that will be inches away from residential windows and bedroom windows in the existing neighboring property. This, I'm sure, is destined, according to the neighbours, to an OMB appeal, on the grounds that it is not sound urban design, and that it's, it's a solid wall next to somebody's residential windows. And that was the rationale why I voted against it last time, and that's why I'll be voting against it again. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor George?
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you. I concur with councillor Neil. I read through the report, and the thing that troubled me, beyond what councillor Neil has already spoken to, is that the windows that he's talking about in the adjoining property have fire shutters on them. Now, I know under the building code, bedrooms aren't, you don't have to have a window in them, but in this particular case, this building was constructed many years ago, has windows there, has fire shutters on them, and it is an accessibility issue if there was ever a fire, there was smoke in the hallway, that type of thing, they would obviously want to use the windows for access to get out of that structure. With the proximity of this new building now, that doesn't exist, because the buildings are, is so close to this one, I don't think you could get out. And I did take a look, I was trying to find something in fire regulations, that if there was a case such as this, is there a specific, you know, distance in which, you know, any new structure going in, because I know on the zoning, I guess it can build up to zero in this particular zone, but if there's already an existing structure in that proximity, if a new structure's going up, must they adhere more to some of the safety concerns that might be related to the accessibility, the ability to access the building if there was a fire or such, you know, the window being there for what would certainly appears would be that purpose. So, I guess one thing I'm concerned about, I saw in the report where there would be discussion at building application time and such, but there's also a set of drawings that were within that report, which, you know, was approved. So I guess if there's somebody from staff that might be able to tell me, if at the time of permit application, will all of those issues be looked at, to be very clear that if it is an accessibility issue in case of fire, that there will be enough room there to do it, because I didn't have a chance to talk with the fire chief to find out if there was anything I wasn't picking up when I looked online to see if there were separation requirements as such, and I didn't see that, so.
Ms Hagner?
Thank you, and through you. So as part of the technical review process associated with any zoning application, that information goes through the building department as well as the fire department. So they were part of the initial circulations to do with the technical review of the zoning application. As you indicated, this property has a current entitlement of being able to build to a zero lot line or a hundred percent on that side, so they are proposing a setback that is less than what the requirement is of the zoning. When the zoning's in place, we don't have the ability to impose a lesser standard than what they're entitled to by law through the zoning, and that's not something they are seeking to amend through this process. But certainly, as part of a review of the detailed building drawings through the permitting process, every caution will be exercised to ensure that what's being built meets all applicable code from a fire code and building code perspective, and any easements that may be required in terms of being able to access in and out will be secured through a committee of adjustment process.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Stroud?
Sorry, your last answer, Director, was a little confusing, because the, it's, the, the application is for the building that will have a solid wall, the windows are on the building that's already there. They wouldn't have the opportunity to go to a, through a, any kind of process for, that you're describing, that applies to the, to the project that's being built. So how would the fire code be addressed, based on the application going through that process?
Ms Hagner?
Thank you, and through you. So the, the technical part to do with the review related to fire code requirements and building code requirements, in terms of minimum separation distance that's required based on combustibility of materials between the two building faces, windows, all of that will be reviewed again. Again, there is an initial review of this as part of the zoning application, and it will be reviewed in detail through the building permit application as well, to do with the construction of the new building.
Any other questions or comments? Councillor Hutchinson?
Just to be clear, the answers to councillor George and councillor Stroud's questions, does that mean that it's possible that the proponent will have to move the building back to allow some more accessibility, even though the bylaw says it can be zero, which on Princess Street downtown is not that surprising?
So through the building process, if there are things that are determined to be required from a code compliance perspective, that has to be adjusted through that process before the construction can take place, and then a final occupancy can be granted. So oftentimes in the building code, sometimes it has to do with physical separation, more so than that, it has to do with the ability of, you can't, what I'm trying to say is that you can't build a new building that's going to compromise the safety of another building, or create a situation where there can be combustible materials that are close up against one another without the applicable code being met. So that will be addressed by the building and the fire department through the detailed building process of review on those drawings.
Okay, and that, does that mean that the building, the owner of the building with the windows will not be responsible for making this an issue? It'll be made an issue by our own department?
That's correct.
That's what I understand what you're saying.
The onus would be on the builder of the new building, not the adjacent property owner.
Thank you.
Okay, so we will call the vote on clause three. And that carries by a vote of eight to three. Okay, moving on to information reports, we have three, if you have any questions, just raise your hand. At number one, tender and contract awards subject to the established criteria for delegation of authority for the month of November twenty sixteen. Number two, report on agreements executed under delegated approval and signing authority July first, twenty sixteen to December thirty-first, twenty sixteen. Number three, consideration of an interim control bylaw near campus neighborhoods. We have no information reports from members of council, miscellaneous business. Do have a couple of motions. Number one, that as requested by the Heart and Stroke Foundation, council proclaimed February twenty seventeen as heart month in the city of Kingston. Moved by councillor Neil, seconded by councillor Stroud. Please vote. And that carries. Number two, that as requested by the Knights of Columbus, council approved the raising of the flag for Special Olympics Ontario in Confederation Park on Tuesday, January the thirty-first, twenty seventeen. Can I have a mover, please? Moved by councillor Shell, seconded by councillor George. And that carries. New motions. Number one, moved by councillor Neil, seconded by councillor Holland. Whereas over three thousand Kingston citizens and over seven thousand regionally are federal civil servants, whereas the Phoenix pay system continues to leave many workers unpaid, forcing many families into financial crisis, therefore be it resolved that the city of Kingston strongly requests the federal government of Canada to use whatever means necessary to correct the situation, including a consideration of a regional pay center in order to address the backlog of unpaid workers, and that this motion be shared with Prime Minister Trudeau, Minister Foot, MP Mark Garretson, MPP Sophie Kowala, and leaders of all federal opposition parties in the Parliament of Canada. Councillor Neil?
Yes. It's been a long night, so I'm going to make this as quick as possible. We have, each and every one of us have hundreds of, of these unfortunate people who are our constituents, and if this were a private sector employer, they would be in breach of the Labor Act, there would be recourse for these people to insist that they get paid as they justly should. This is a case of the previous government purchasing what doesn't appear to be an appropriate system, and the current government trying desperately to correct it with Band-Aid measures. But the reality is, as we heard from... But the reality is, as we heard from the delegation today, people are going, never know whether tomorrow is a payday. So that's terrible for business in a civil service town, which we very much are here in Kingston. It also, I've had people say to me, people with good incomes on paper, that they've been forced to go to the food bank, that they've been forced to borrow money from family to pay rent or to pay a mortgage payment. This should not be happening in Canada in the 21st century. They've got to fix it, and if they, if they can't fix it immediately, then perhaps we need a regional pay center in Kingston that will allow. And I understand that that's something that MP Garretson is looking favorably on, but this motion would reinforce that direction. So I sincerely hope that this can pass unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Holland?
Thank you, Your Worship. Yes, and just to add quickly, the, this issue, as big of a disaster as it is, and as it appeared to be from the very beginning, seems to be fading somewhat from public view despite the great efforts of representatives of these workers, simply because of the media being clogged with a lot of other illegitimate, I would argue, and perhaps, alternative facts. So here we are, it is our responsibility to do all that we can to ensure that this is addressed immediately, as soon as possible, and for that reason, I ask for your support for this, and I would also just like to say that, and it is a true sign of solidarity that the members of the delegation who spoke to us tonight have remained with us through this entire evening, so thank you.
Councillor Stroud?
Thank you, Your Worship. I will also be brief. This is more than a disgrace, this is absolutely ridiculous, what's happened here. And I first learned of it down the hall when the Prime Minister came to town, and it was one of the questions that he fielded in the open house that he had. And, you know, and I'm sure he was sincere when he said he would look into it, but come on, you're the Government of Canada, and you can't fix this? It doesn't make any sense. I don't understand what the problem is, I don't understand the delay, and I don't understand why they can't temporarily put in something to get, to make sure these people are paid. It's an absolute disgrace. So thank you, Councillor Neil, for bringing this forward. I don't usually speak on things of other levels of government, but this one is ridiculous. Thank you.
Okay, so we will call the vote on new motion number one. And that carries. Are there any notices of motion? Mr. Clerk, loss for minutes?
Moved by Councillor Turner, seconded by Councillor Hutchinson, that the minutes of City Council meeting number 2017-03, held Tuesday, January 10, 2017, be confirmed.
And that carries. We have some tabling of documents, a whole lot of communications. Is there any other business? Mr. Clerk, I'll ask for bylaws, please.
Okay, I would point out that we have nine bylaw votes tonight. There are a number of pecuniaries, so I will walk you through it, let you know when it's your turn to step out of the room. Moved by Councillor Turner, seconded by Councillor McLaren, that bylaws one and two be given their first and second reading. One more?
That carries.
Moved by Councillor Turner, seconded by Councillor McLaren, that clause 11.35 of bylaw number 2010-1 be suspended for the purpose of giving bylaws one and two three
Please vote. That carries.
Moved by Councillor Turner, seconded by Councillor McLaren, that bylaws one and two be given their third reading.
That carries.
Councillor Cannon and Councillor George, you'll need to step out of the room, please. Moved by Councillor Turner, seconded by Councillor McLaren, that bylaws four and seven be given their first and second reading.
That carries.
Moved by Councillor Turner, seconded by Councillor McLaren, that bylaws four and seven be given their third reading.
That carries.
Councillor George, you can return, please. Moved by Councillor Turner, seconded by Councillor McLaren, that bylaws three, five, and six be given their first and second reading.
And that carries.
Moved by Councillor Turner, seconded by Councillor McLaren, that bylaws three, five, and six be given their third reading. Moved by Councillor Turner, seconded by Councillor McLaren, that bylaw eight be given its first and second reading.
That carries.
This is our final vote. Moved by Councillor Turner, seconded by Councillor McLaren, that bylaw eight be given its third
That carries. Motion to adjourn, please. Moved by Councillor Turner, seconded by Councillor Shell.
Okay, one more, please.
If everyone can please vote on the adjournment, please. And we are adjourned, thank you very much.